Yes.
All right. Six of two and I'm ready for meeting for District Council on first meeting. Everyone please rise for the flags.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You as a captain, you will pass.
Um, council member Lucasey.
Here.
Council member Brian. Uh, council member Kaiser.
Here.
Council member Deutsch.
Sure.
Mayor Claire now.
Here.
All right, all present.
Uh, you do some turbidity that's been uh river still occurred. Um, we have members of the project here. I'm just going to open up a whole finer presentation and ask them just this kind of urgent issue. A lot of them have addressed the situation and give us updates if we'd like to. If you have as much time as you'd like to give some updates.
And then can you just make sure to press that?
Question holds.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Tara Fitzgerald. I've met many of you before, I believe, at a previous council meetings and uh and onsite. Um, I'm with the U S E P A and I'm here with the Response Unified Command, John DeYoung and John Amos. John DeYoung's with uh U P R R and John Amos is the State On-Site Coordinator with uh the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, OSPR. Um, and so uh as many of you know, uh, we've been addressing uh oil releasing from this site uh over the last several years. Uh, we've uh and part of that is to collect oil but also collect to remove uh soil contaminated or oil contaminated soils away from the river and take the wall that is along the majority of that wall that is along uh the U P rail yard out and replace it with uh restored vegetation. Um, part of that work now has advanced to actually working in the river. And um, as you probably have seen, many of you have seen from the uh site from 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 the river itself, we have a barrier in place to capture any oil that is released during our excavation and also to contain any materials that are in the uh excavation as we're removing them from the river. Um, so we began that work in earnest on uh last Monday. And uh, as uh, as the mayor has has mentioned, um, we're providing an update and also, you know, here to address some of the concerns we've heard from the public, particularly concerning the release of sediments into the river. So basically having more turbid water, you know, being able to see more uh sandy looking water in downstream of our site. Um, so to give a little bit of a background, um, as we started this work last year in the river, um, we determined somewhat to our surprise that while we've been very much able to contain the oil from the site, uh, we were surprised that we were seeing some sediments that were already at the site, you know, that we are trying to uh, when we pull, when we excavate the materials, you know, we're we're stirring up some sediments. Um, so we recalibrated this year uh this year and um revised the design and also conducted a pilot test last month, um, basically to ensure that we weren't going to have this issue. Uh, and we have unfortunately continued to see now in a in a couple of areas, some um still seeing that release of some cloudy sediments. Uh, so what we've determined is that we are still going to fix that area. Um, right now we are not conducting any uh removal of sediments or oil containing sediments that can go into the river. Uh, if you are seeing any uh turbidity releasing from this point, any cloudy soils, um, that is because we are testing the uh the barrier and we're modifying it. We're testing it and we're putting the clean California cert of state certified uh backfill that we um are going to be placing into the river. So we're 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 releasing a little bit of that into the barrier to basically ensure that we have tidied it up. So so we're committed to, you know, not releasing any any contaminated soils into, you know, downstream. Um, we are complying with the state requirements to uh keep turbidity within their specified limits. Um, so they, we are required to test for turbidity multiple times a day. And um, we are, and if we do exceed that, um, you know, those requirements, we're required to report that to the state and and stay within our permitting requirements. Um, yeah.
Uh, question I have is, so I'm I'm hearing, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm hearing that there's actually going to be some excavation taking place in the river itself.
Yes.
Okay, because I had always in my mind assumed it was just on on there. So that's where we're moving into a phase then where this is now becoming visible to the people. Is that the concept?
I think that's that's correct. So before we were working behind the wall, um, and we took down, you know, the the top top layer of soil, we took down part of the wall, but we were still, you know, digging behind the wall. And this year it's time, I mean, that it's really the ultimate goal of the project is because that oil is sitting right behind the wall. Um, so that's why that wall's got to come out. Um, and so that we're really actually at the phase where we're getting the most results for, you know, getting the most oil actually out and away from the river. But it is also the most difficult part um in terms of, you know, the technical part in terms of um safely excavating. Um, and and, you know, having the uh in river barrier has uh been very tricky in this river. It definitely um, it definitely likes to move. And uh, so we are, we are still working on that, but we're committed to getting it right.
Just, we had some people join on Zoom in in the room. If you wouldn't mind just stating which agency you're with and again.
Sure, sure. Uh, so I'm, I don't know if there's a, I don't know if they can see me or not. Um, uh, I I'm Tara Fitzgerald. I'm with the United States EPA. Um, and I'm with uh, so we're in unified command, which means that we are addressing this removal as a as a team. Uh, but as many of you know, the state um water board has a cleanup and abatement order um for this site to remove the oil. The EPA has a Clean Water Act or uh order to remove the the oil from the site. And so we're coming together as a unified command with with John with U P and John Amos with the state with OSPR. He's the state on scene coordinator. I'm the federal on scene coordinator and so we are um coming together as a team to address this. So this is all of our actions onsite are are being uh, you know, we all have responsibility for it and we we are all approving the moving forward of it.
Any other questions?
Residents have concerns about the safety of the fish. That's quite a number of them. On data spaces. You guys have always stated the safety, is there any uh relevant issues regarding ankle?
So at this time, we haven't identified any. Um, as I think was um, has been previously stated, we've worked with the state agency Oeha to determine that and they had actually collected samples um in 2018 to help make that determination from the river. So we've recently contacted them again to consult with them again based on what we're seeing now. Um, and and we're working with them, but we have not identified any uh specific concerns. And they at that time, um, again, had identified that it was continued to be safe to to fish.
So if you could summarize the message that you would give to any fish or the dog that's concerned, how would you summarize the situation right now?
Right now, we're not, we're not closing any fisheries or requesting the closure of any fisheries um or stopping of recreational fishing at at this time. Uh, we are, you know, we are again consulting with the state again to ensure that our activities are are continuing to keep the river safe for fishing, but we don't have any current um recommendations to stop fishing.
Maybe it would help us to understand how often that was being monitored as the project unfolds. I know it goes into dormant mode in winter.
Mm-hmm.
But is it monthly, weekly that fishing game is involved with the testing the fish in the river?
Uh, we had made that determination earlier on. Sediment isn't determined to be in here and be toxic to the to the wildlife as a fish. So, I mean, really, the the worst part about seven being in the river is that the fish are seen today. Uh, that's that's kind of the problem with it, I'm saying, right? You know, it's a lot easier to, right, to land flying on the water and, you know, spit that fish and that fish. See that fly after. That's that's a large concern when it comes to.
And then my question here is, I know you mentioned you're measuring turbidity multiple times a day. Um, can you just briefly go over for the councils? That way we can express the public and for any members of the public who are listening, uh, what precautions and what measurements you're doing uh to detect other things such as chemicals or fuels um in the the river that may be downstream of the site?
So at this time, we're not conducting any additional sampling beyond the turbidity to ensure. And the turbidity is essentially a a measurement of how much sediment you're seeing in the water. Um, so so at this point, we don't have any additional plans to uh conduct other types of testing, but that is part of the consultation with Oeha to determine if they recommend any additional testing.
I guess what I'm hearing is is that the confusion is is that what we're seeing now is not the oil as much as it's just the turbidity, the the things being stirred up sediment, is that it?
Yes, it is, but we still uh, it, we still don't want to, we're we're not, we don't find that acceptable. We we understand that it, you know, impacts the the use, it potentially impacts the use of the river and also, you know, it's just not good practice. So we are working diligently to to stop that.
Well, I think most people, when they see that, are thinking that they're going to be ingesting chemicals when they go home. And that's why I'm saying it's really sediment when you're talking about.
Yes.
You're not really anticipating that there's any fuel that is going out there or any chemicals or anything.
We've had, we've had pretty good success with containment of the oil um on to to keep it from leaving the site. Um, it's it's the uh, it's the sediments that we've uh been struggling with uh with um because they're very fine in this area.
And they've been analyzed and they're they're not toxic in any way?
We have not analyzed them specifically for toxicity. That's what we're consulting with with Oeha on. Um, but we haven't determined that we have a need. Um, we haven't determined that there's a specific need to test them based on based on, you know, what we've seen to date.
Children that swim in the river. I I swim in the river daily. Sadly, less of a fisherman than I am a swimmer, but I do love being in the river. And uh, there is some concern among the residents, you know, we don't know. Obviously, oil leaked for a hundred years. Uh, we didn't get to hear a lot about that. We saw some sheen go by, so it'd just be helpful to 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 get answers to that.
Okay.
Obviously, we're appreciative of the overall project and the goal. And it's it's been a long road for Union Pacific, you know, to to get here. But um, i- if it's dangerous, we'd much rather know and stay out of the river for a summer or two to get to the point where we have a safe river for the future.
Understood, understood.
And then so basically, for the current turbidity, the first couple of days, if turbidity was potentially soil that was there, and then the last couple of days, are they testing it with clean sand?
Right, yeah, from, yeah, from from today, from last couple of days on, from today. From today on, I don't know if we started that yesterday or today, today. Okay, yeah, so from today on.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, with that, we will go to item number four, public comment. Uh, this is a time for any members of the public who are present at their person. What's that? Oh, before we go into public comment, before we, before we go into public comment, the more we hear about this, the better. So, yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Officer John Amos, California Fish and Wildlife, Office of Spill Prevention and Response. Um, I I am one of the primary pollution responders in the North States. And as Tara had mentioned, I'm, you know, been actively involved in what we have going on the rail yard. Uh, as you guys may know, in the last week, there have been a couple of Cal O E S reports made uh regarding sheen observed at the Butterfly Bend area. Um, uh, fortunately, being in the area, uh, part of or part of the team I work with for the state was in the area and they were, went down there and made initial observations of that sheen. And at that time, we didn't, didn't believe it was connected with the cleanup response we have at the rail yard. Uh, reason we didn't believe it was connected was one, we didn't have any any oil releases or petroleum releases from onsite uh by that time. Um, and also it appeared that the the sheen was was more or less uh coming from the bottom of the river and daylighting. Uh, the uh, and in further investigation, uh, our department even put out a second Cal O E S report yesterday that that stated that we didn't believe it was in connected, connected to this response. Uh, after further looking at it today, I we we aren't determining that it is, but I would say there is more of a likelihood than than not. Uh, there's um, it it appears that at some point in time, there's been some, you know, potentially a deposit of oil that or or sheen that has left the site. Um, at in a butterfly bend, it could have uh gone up into the organic material, being plant material, um algae or moss on the rocks. And then uh, and then, and then the public has I seen, seen that as it has kind of maybe washed back off of the algae towards Butterfly Bend, creating an area where sheen was observable. Um, it, I was down there today and I I I was there scraping it with a shovel um and and probing along. And uh, I guess part of the good news is is that it doesn't look like it is coming out from underneath the roadway. Um, if it were coming out from under under the roadway, there'd be some mystery source out there that we wouldn't be able to identify. And and that is is still, you know, one of the potentials, along with it, the potential of it being from the response itself. But I I'm I'm here just to be transparent in in in, if anybody reads or reviews, and I plan to make an update to my Cal O E S report, uh, that it, we aren't eliminating the fact that it could very well be sheen that has been released from the site.
Are you saying that it could be something that had been released earlier? It had hung out there, if you will, collected there. But you don't think there's anything happening now? I mean, that would be the difference. Do you think there's a leak now that caused that? Or do you think that was something that was there before?
I I think it was an intermittent uh release or incidental release that could have depo- could have deposited some uh petroleum source uh on on that small area of the bank, because it's an interesting spot and Butterfly Bend comes in, uh, comes in fast, right at the top of the bend. And then there's an eddy on the river left side where the the sheen was was being uh observed. And in that eddy, uh, you know, you would go down there and you wouldn't see it for some moments. And then, and then we we'd go down and look a couple of days later and you might see it in in very small amounts, you know, uh, you know, it could be measured in, you know, square inches type of bits of sheen. Um, and it would come and go. And then after getting down and probing and scraping the uh vegetation with a shovel, um, it it appeared that it had washed up and kind of created a bathtub ring effect, which is why it was stayed there and resided and then somehow mobilized back into the water with water wash washing up onto the bank.
I guess the good news is we know you're keeping an eye on it now. So going forward, we should be able to get a better picture as time evolves.
Yes, yes, indeed. It it is certainly on the radar.
I, I, I. I have to apologize. It's been a long day. It's hot out there, we did roof. Um, and I'll I'll share. I just wrote this to my fellow council members. Did we just get conflicting reports? You say we cool. You say we ain't. Is this just a bubble? You heard about our concerns of fish and swimming.
Sure.
Our children.
Yeah.
My fellow council members. I mean, if there's something going on and it was even mentioned, we need to stay the hell out of the water for a summer. But what? But now you, and you, sir, I commend you. You had the balls to get up and say, hey, wait, look, so what are you telling us? What are you?
Of course, I'm telling you at some point in time, the, and it's, and it's still yet to be determined because it not the, the original source for the sheen we're we're seeing has not been, it's not absolute that it's even from the uh, from the response at the rail yard. Uh, you know, what, and that's why I mentioned it, there could be a source underneath the road. We, our department has taken a sample of of the sheen and we had, and the plan is in early in the response, we took samples from the rail yard and we have created a a fingerprint of the oil that we have up there. So what we use now is we take that sample that we have down there and we can fingerprint match or 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 not match with what we have onsite.
When do we get results of that, sir?
It will take a week or two weeks.
And you will keep us informed?
Absolutely informed. I will, we, you know, we are here and our job is to be responsible to the community. And we are certainly doing uh our best possible, doing that the best possible way we can uh by being here. Uh, you know, it it is the uh, even with the releases we had early on when um, you know, there was migrating sheen downstream, Oeha would still had made a determination that the, you know, the the fishery was safe. Uh, it it is never advisable that if there, if if you do see sheen, and that is one of the one ways we we determine turbidity versus sheen. We see turbidity in the water, it looks like cloudy water. Sheen is up on top of the water, very identifiable, like if you poured olive oil or sesame oil into your, you know, into water, you'll see it float on top. And you'll identify sheen just the same way. And it and it would not be advisable for anyone to, you know, to play in in an area where you might see sheen occurring. Down in that area, it had been intermittent and that, you know, it it might daylight for a moment. And like I said, the the amount of sheen we're seeing could be measured in square inches. And you see it for a moment and then mobilize and go downstream. And and in the long term, it's expected that it burns off as a petroleum fuel would while exposed to the natural environment. Yeah, so and that's, and that's what we expect happens with these incidental releases of sheen. Um, uh, and and sheen in itself is an extremely small layer of petroleum. As you know, most people know, a little bit of fuel on on water spreads out really far. Um, and so uh, uh, the good, I mean, it's bad to see it downstream. Uh, we haven't had any types of releases from the site uh to where we're picking up oil downstream. You know, that's the other thing you'd see that would cause quite a bit of alarm is if you actually have a, you know, a glob of oil that you you're in the water, your dog's in the water and you're like, what is this sticky substance? That's, that's, that would be a really bad sign. That's certainly the the, and sheen is very difficult to to capture. We have uh many methods of capturing oil as it is something that collects to absorbance. We have, you can use a vacuum truck on it, things where we can collect it in in volume. But sheen, the with how thin it is, doesn't adhere to absorbent pads the same way. It isn't collected nearly as easily. So as that is in the water, you know, um, it's, it's a very small amount, you know, the as small as you can measure type amount. Uh, but uh, when it's, when it gets free, it's it's difficult with the technology we have today to be able to absorb it or to recover it. Um, so in in these very small amounts being, you know, in in the square square inches amounts, it it, you will be fine.
Well, thank you, because I have a passion for my town and my people.
Sure, and I appreciate that.
For your job.
Well, I.
We're lucky, so, um, but please keep us informed.
Sure.
And again, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, yeah, we're happy to do so and we have a regular connection uh here. And, you know, as questions come up, we are available to the council, the council's members for the questions uh ongoing. And and at times, uh, yes, I do. Uh, I at least have my contact information I could provide with you. But Anna Burkholder, who is our liaison, uh, she she provides, she can liaison with the city council and with the unified command to provide the most in-depth and best answers possible to the questions you might have in regards to our response.
Anna Burkholder.
Burkholder. Yeah.
Um, my uh question here is when there was this kind of initial first reporting going on around this, it kind of was, it was stated that there was a potential individual who was responsible for release of something into the river. Um, was that actually, was that the case? Or was it this potential legacy release of stuff that has been trapped in the?
Yeah, I my underst- I was, I had responded to the reports at Butterfly Bend. I'm I'm not sure as to the uh origin uh initially of those reports. Um, but I I did not receive a specific port report myself of somebody being responsible for releasing to that area.
Okay.
I just quickly address that. I I know your comment about, you know, we just received conflicting reports. We definitely knew that he was going to get up and and talk about this and and update the vote. So I wasn't attempting to conflict with Kennedy.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys, you know, I, I never say, I don't need to be a dick, but you know, I just uh, I'm concerned just like you all, you know? So, um, if there's something wrong, tell us. Don't, never pull no punches because we can get a follow up with you.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Uh, before we move on, uh, would you like to say anything on behalf of Union Pacific?
I'm here. Nice mustache, you're getting there.
All right, uh, well, with that, we will move on to public comment this evening. This is a time for members of the public to address the city council uh with anything that may relate to city business, uh, either in person or on Zoom. We'll do people in person first, then followed by Zoom. If you are on Zoom when the time comes, please signify you'd like to make a public comment by going to the reactions tab and raising your hand. Uh, all public comment is limited to three minutes. You will receive a 30 second warning when your time is almost up. If you wish to make a comment on something that is either on item number 10 or 11 on the agenda, uh, which is old business and new business, I do ask that you refrain and make your comment at that time as there is dedicated public comment for every single one of those items. Uh, with that, we will open public comment to the room. And if you could please state your name and address for the record at the beginning of your public comment, I will not start your time until after you state your name and address, if you choose to do so in your first sentence. Consent agenda. Oh, yeah, and if you have anything, um, any comments on the consent agenda, which today consists of one item, the check register for seven thirteen through seven twenty six, uh, this is the time to make those comments as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members and members of the public, before you start my time, I will note there are no agendas available for the audience.
Sorry, they're saying.
And that's not a good look. When you talk about agenda item 10 and 11, we don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
My name is Peter Arth. I live at fifty eight, fifty nine Sacramento Avenue, Dunsmere, California. And I have reflected on the last city council meeting involving Treasurer Ravino, uh, which I attended. I've reflected on the town hall meeting last week on downtown redevelopment, which I attended. on downtown redevelopment, which I attended. And I had the benefit of a communication from Steve Bryan, the executive director of our resource center and the county's resource centers, and his communication carried a phrase. Talk to people, not about them. Talk to people, but not about them. I think one of the big problems with the reprimand of Treasurer Rubino is, I've known him for over fifty years, he didn't talk to me. I think one of the big problems with Mark Juarez, I hope he's listening, is that he doesn't talk to me. So with regard to enforcement of the empty and abandoned building ordinance, which I want to talk about briefly tonight, I think it would benefit the community to invite Mark Juarez to give a 30 minute presentation in public on what he described as the plan that will make everybody happy for his empty and abandoned buildings. What is the plan? When is it going to be completed, and what are the resources? Let's talk to each other. For sitting council members, mostly Councilmember Kiesler, and candidates for the city council, let's talk to each other. I don't know if Councilmember Kiesler cares about the blown out windows that have been in the Dunsmere Hotel for several years after the fire, that left us a red tag building. You said you cared about getting the California Theater open. I don't know if you care about that or not. You enthusiastically voted yes for the empty and abandoned building ordinance several years ago. Do you care about enforcing it, especially for the large buildings?
Thirty seconds.
I don't know. So I think we are better off moving forward to adopt the ethic of, let's not do gossip. Let's not do something like, oh, the city's trying to take Mark's buildings. Let's work together, communicate with each other, and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quentin Gaddy, forty-eight thirty-three Siskiyou Avenue. I just want to make an announcement, starting tomorrow, the Small Business Development Center will be hosting office hours at the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce. We're going to be hosting these every first and third Friday of every month, and we're going to be there from ten to three P M. And this is where small businesses can come and receive assistance on anything, whether it's their financing, their bookkeeping, H R, marketing, business plans, growth, employee management, whatever challenges they have, we, we have an advisor who can likely work with them. So again, that's going to be first and, and third Fridays every month at the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce from ten to three. Thank you.
Thank you, Wood.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Alex, I live in Dunsmere year round, been here about four years, I guess. When I first came here, I met Mr. Peter Arth. He had some peach trees that were dropping peaches on the ground, and I was like, hey, can I go pick those peaches or waste it on the ground? We got to know each other, and he invited me to join student, I, to join politics. He said, we need you on the solid waste committee, because there's this S B eighteen thirteen, that state of California, it was passed way back when Governor Moonbeam was still the governor, it was about the clean air and the problem of methane gas coming out of landfills. If you have decomposing trash, you make methane gas, similar to what comes out of your tail end, and it comes, is created in the bowels of your stomach. Methane gas, it's the same thing as natural gas, it's comes out, you know. So I would like to say that I am still trying, Mr. Arth, to find a site to divert solid waste from the landfill, particularly the green waste, I'm talking branches, grass, clippings, divert that from the landfill, and in the process, turn it into compost so that people can use it in their backyard.
Thirty seconds? No, I'm just going to give you an extra second.
Point of order, I'd like to either stop the clock then, please?
I did stop the clock, all right.
Thank you.
Someone's phone went off, if I could just ask everyone, you're, you're fine. But if I could just ask everyone just to check their phones, make sure it's silent, I'll give you a second or two before I start your time again. Since the phone went off, you do have about one minute and forty-one seconds left, and then I'll give you a few seconds extra as well.
So solid waste, the city is going to be facing fines if they can't meet the state requirements for landfills. Look into it, it's a CalRecycle, it's got a good website, explains the problem. There's going to be fees coming up that the state is going to assess. This is a can that's been kicked down the road for, like I say, Governor Jerry Brown the second was the governor when this was passed in two thousand and eighteen, it's a state law. Sent, sent bill, I believe the number is eighteen thirteen, but anyhow. We need to fix the problem, we need to find a site to put the green waste at least. And I would love to manage the site, have it open every Saturday, so that every Saturday, citizens of Dunsmere can take their green waste, drop it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, is there anyone else in the room who'd like to make a public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll turn to Zoom. If you would like to make a comment on Zoom, please go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Seeing no one, I will close public comment for this evening. All right, with that, we will move on to item number six, committee reports.
Thank you all.
Five.
Five, sorry, council and staff comments, trying to skip us here. All right. The Sheriff Department have anything for us today?
No.
Thank you. City Manager Reeve?
All right, been spending a lot of time prepping for Brew Fest, it is on Saturday, not going to steal anybody's thunder for that. City Hall is closed for the rest of the week due to short staffing and illnesses. And then also, we've been called, and we've seen a number of trash cans tipped over, the bears are out. Please lock, secure your trash cans and your car windows and everything else. If there is a bear, I do understand that the one up on Siskiyou Avenue may be a little more aggressive. There is a number, CalTIPS for cowfish and wildlife, that if we do need to get it removed, that that is the best way to report it.
So you have a quick question for people who are interested in picking up papers from the city clerk. How are they able to do that while we have the city clerks unable to do that?
They can, they can call and. Set up an appointment, we should be open on Monday, we still have a week, but we didn't have anybody today, so we got one day left this week, so.
Question?
Yes.
What are our options right now, I'm kind of confused on recycling, is there someplace we can take recycling into the city limits?
So, so currently, so currently, there is no recycling location within city limits. There is, I was up at Shastis Park in Mount Shasta, they do still have a recycling location there for C R Vs. And then I believe you can take them directly to Siskiyou Opportunity Center. But I'm working with the county on that right now, we're trying to figure it out. It was a county run program that was working with Siskiyou Opportunity, and it kind of just abruptly just collapsed on us, and so we're still working with the J P A and trying to get that coordinated. And they have all new staff up there in general services, so we've got some challenges just to get everybody caught up. Thanks.
Amanda, do you know if, if you take stuff directly to the opportunity center, are they taking plastic or are they just taking glass?
I believe it's only whatever consumer recycle, C R V, so whatever those are.
Okay. All right.
I was there today, actually, they're taking glass cans, maybe with C R V, so the answer is yes.
Okay.
A little bit of glass.
With that, we will move on to, anything else? With that, we'll move on to council comment, and we'll start today with the Councilmember Spencer.
Okay. The first thing that I would like to ask is, what is the status of the plaque from my friend Dale Foster? Does anybody have anything to report?
I'd have to check with Wendy, I, I've been out the first part of the week, and now she's out the rest of the week. So I know they were working on it, but I don't know what the status is, I'll follow up with you there.
Just send me the bill, whatever, I mean, I, I.
Okay.
Okay. I have inspector. I know that we're going to get to this later in the agenda, but I just want to reiterate to council, there are some contractors out there, and people are, houses are tore up, won't have no shower, don't have no toilet, they've got temporary situations. So we really need to find ourselves, Building Inspector, I thought we had one that you were interviewing, it was going to be like the substitute. Okay, and the other thing is, it was already mentioned, Brew Fest, Brew Fest is Saturday, it's one of the big things in this town. We have a good time, and I don't know if a lot of people know this, but the money derived from Brew Fest pays for scholarships for the kids in high school, that's behind the rotary, so. Come out, support the Brew Fest. I'm also a little shorthanded for security this year. If you guys, there's some people that would like to be security, can't drink while you're up being a security, but there's going to be plenty of beer for security when it's over. If you could be at the ballpark at two thirty, if you can get in touch with me beforehand, there will be an interview session with the sheriffs. We don't want to have no crazy people, you know, so if you guys got, you know, good attitude, you want to be security, come hang out, get some free beer in the, you get free entrance and free beer in the end. So we need some security guys, so be at the ballpark at two thirty, and we look forward to having a good time. We've got some really good bands, they have their own following, so it's, I'm really looking forward to it, it's going to be pretty good. And then I guarantee you, that are home, Mr. Mayor will be out there dancing, front row, he does it every year, he and his girlfriend, so. Hope to see you all there, thanks.
Councilmember Luttey?
I have no comment, we have a lot of items for tonight.
Councilmember Birch?
Ditto, no comment.
Vice Mayor Bryan?
I just wanted to congratulate the city, thank you, Justin, Dennis, I assume, also Stephen, three people responsible for it, for the wonderful new signs supporting the Mossbray Trail efforts. I love the locations, it's great that there's a picture of Mossbray, so that people, even if they, they've never been there or won't go along the railroad tracks, they have the opportunity to see what we're working towards. I just want to remind everyone that we now can officially accept donations towards the trail project, and that the stage we're at, generally speaking, we have conceptual approval to build the trail, so we're working on raising the money to do the engineering.
Mr. Vice Mayor, where do they go to donate money?
They go, you can get a Q R code, or you can go to the city's website. It's the Community Foundation of the North State that is hosting the account for us and making sure we're a nonprofit for the money that is dedicated to that. So the easiest way is take your phone out and go to Q R code that's on the sign and go and donate there, but otherwise, it's the website, our city website.
Yeah, it's on, it's on our city website, under Initiatives, it says Mossbray Falls, that's one of the options.
So.
Good job.
On that note, I want to, you know, praise the signs, but also point out that last year, our information says that there was over fifty, fifty-eight thousand or fifty-two?
It was eighty thousand between Hedge Creek and Mossbray, Mossbray received like twenty-six thousand.
Okay, so more than fifty thousand people go to Hedge Creek, so that sign, you know, between the two of them, we'll have eighty thousand people this year seeing those signs, being educated on the trail and what we're trying to achieve here. We also have at Hedge Creek already fifty thousand people there, and I realize that's, that's really high traffic for Dunsmere, so it's hard to keep it.
This is where we mentioned parking meters.
Well, we want to look into parking meters, I'm just going to go back to, I'd like to know the status. I was there about five days ago, and the platform was still not complete. I know we were working on getting a third party in there, I would just like to really encourage staff to, to get on that, because we get fifty thousand people that see that, who's going to want to donate money if we can't maintain the trails we have? And we, we do maintain them, I don't want to say that, but it's a high priority for me to put our best foot forward for those fifty thousand people that may not know anything else about Dunsmere till that, except that trail, until they get to know us better. So I'd love to expand the visibility of the rest of Dunsmere from that place going forward, but thank you for the signs, it's a great start. I want to congratulate and thank the Resource Center and some of the volunteers involved at the farmer's market. We have an amazing farmer's market for how small of a city we have. You know, Mount Shasta has maybe ten times the vendors we do, and not a single one of them is as good as Julia's fruit stands when it comes to the amount of produce. People drive all the way from Waireka to come to our farmer's market. I have noticed, though, that they, they cut it off right at four, because too many people were getting there early to get the good melons, so now it's officially at four, you can't get there early. I had the opportunity to tour one of the newest businesses in towns, Darmara, it's an art gallery, and they hold art classes. They were recipient of one of the grants for small businesses, and they bought equipment with it. They gave me permission to say that, and that they're very grateful for the city, and of course Quentin's role in getting them that equipment, it's a game changer for a new business starting out, check them out if you get a chance, they do art classes in the evening, and they're working on youth education programs for art, it's going to be a really good asset for the community, so. They are located at twenty-seven, sorry, fifty-seven twenty-eight Dunsmere Avenue. We're next to the Mossbray Hotel and the real estate office between the two, in the Renaro Building. Going back to thanks for, thank you, Stephen Decatur, for giving us the Firewise community. I, I've already heard of various accounts of people saving money, could you briefly tell everyone how to save money?
Yeah, so Dunsmere is now a Firewise community, with that, we have a certificate, so come, come to me and ask for the certificate, you can reach out to me online. There's the Dunsmere Initiative, under Initiatives, it's Firewise page, and so the information's on there of how to contact me. You can also come to City Hall to get the certificate, but once you get that certificate, you show it to your insurance company, and then they are now required with state law that any person residing in a Firewise community gets a discount on their wildfire insurance. Between different policyholders, that varies, so the amount, I can't, I can't tell you really how much that will be. With the fair plan, though, it is ten percent, but it does vary between policies. I've heard, unfortunately, some people saving as low as like nine dollars, but I have heard as high as a hundred and sixty, so if the amount varies, it's kind of up to your insurance company.
Is it true that we're the nine hundredth in the state, or the nation, which was?
We are the nine hundredth Firewise community in the state and the first in Siskiyou County.
Oh, that is amazing, all right, thank you so much, and I want to point out to the community that Stephen wouldn't be here to help us achieve Firewise status if it weren't for the hard work of City Manager Reeve and Councilwoman Juliana, so, well, sorry, Councilwoman Casey. It, this started off as more of a pipe dream, I'd say a year and a half ago, and here we are with tangible dollar benefits to each of our citizens, and I assume the status will help us in achieving further grants to help with our hazard mitigation and the existential threat of fires, so thank you.
I would like to add one group, that's the Disaster Perilness Advisory Committee.
Oh, of course, not, not to be forgotten, they did the, the foundation of all this. I did attend the Wednesday meeting for downtown revitalization and economic development, the visioning and planning session. I want to thank all the people who attended in a hundred and something degree heat without air conditioning, including staff. It was not the most comfortable conditions to come out, but thank you for coming out and sharing your visions for Dunsmere. I will say that there were many more that I personally reached out and invited that, that couldn't make it, or just can't donate their time, and I understand that, towards focusing on this. I do want them, if they have any desire to be part of this vision and planning, to, to realize that the survey is still open, it only takes about four minutes to fill out, maybe longer if you need to decide your priorities. But we're asking for input on what the immediate achievable goal should be as far as the city goes for economic development and revitalization. The surveys can be found on our website, you can also go to City Hall, once it reopens on Monday, and get paper copies. Or if you want a paper copy.
We're working on those, I just got them yesterday, so I'm just making sure everything's.
Yeah, it, it is, it's probably easier all around to do the online one, if you're able to do that. If not, then the paper copies will be available, we're not going to close that till everyone has the opportunity. But it is high time, and I look forward to the near future where council will need to set these priorities. So the, the time was that meeting and the survey to have that initial input. You know, that, that was the seventh meeting we've had, I think, with Cosmont, with them here, so. Overall, and I've been to every single meeting, a lot of people throughout all seven meetings and the whole year have had. With them here, so overall, and I've been to every single meeting, a lot of people throughout all seven meetings and the whole year have had the input. But I think we're gonna be looking for a smaller group of people who will donate the time to, to really push these priorities forward once the, the community and council sets them. So looking forward to that process, moving to the next stage over the coming months, and I plan on being there at Brew Fest helping out, so see you there.
All right, with that, I'm just gonna touch on Brew Fest for just a few minutes as well. For those of you who don't know, I'm one of the organizing members of that, so I have a little bit of inside information that I'd like to share. First off is, we got a grant from Discover Siskiyou that could be used for music and advertising. This year, and with that, we really spent a little bit more on, we were able to spend more on the bands than we have in the past. We have two, two bands from. Out of the area. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get Secret Society Handshake this year, but we have two out of the area bands that run a little bit more than we could have afforded in the past, and they should put on a great show. Then we also have a few new breweries this year that we've never had in the past, Skyline from, including some great local ones, Skyline from Planet Falls. Laston Traditional Cider, which is located just outside of Red Bluff, and then Merican Brewery from Reading. So it'll be some interesting or some good ones or good stuff for those of you to do the tasting. If you just want to come and listen to the music, it is ten dollars versus the sixty dollars, or fifty dollars or sixty dollars, depending on what you buy for the tasting. It's, it's a great event. Come listen to the music. I highly suggest everybody there, kids under twelve are free if you decide to bring them to listen to the music. And with that, if anyone would like to volunteer, we are still accepting volunteers up to the day of the event, so. Yeah.
One of the sponsors is the Rotary Club, and, and the money that comes from that goes for the backpack program, which sends food home with our children throughout the school year. So that's a really good cause and.
Yep, yeah, and thank you, Bruce, for mentioning that. Yeah, the, the people who put the group, the, put it on are the Chamber of Commerce. The money there goes to help support programs for local businesses, the Rotary Club, which goes towards helping local, mainly helping local kids. And then this year, we also brought the Siskiyou Art Museum in as well. They're providing some support as well. I really just am so thankful to them for joining the, the major sponsors or the major organizers of the event. And obviously, their, the money earned for them will go towards helping local arts in the community, so, all right, and with that.
I had, I had one more. I just wanted, I, I had forgot, we do have fire crews down on the park fire. They had started out in Portola and now they, they shifted their resources. They've been on the park fire for well over a week now. And so just wanted to make sure everybody was aware and that we kept them in our thoughts. Fire Chief is down there as well, helping out, so. And I believe the Sheriff's Department also has a number of people out, out of county assisting in, in other, other disaster areas.
Cool, that's awesome. Yep, don't drink and drive. Take the shuttles if you are in Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, or Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, or McLeod. There are shuttles running. There is a shuttle map available on the Brew Fest website and on the Brew Fest Facebook page. There's multiple stops throughout Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, and then just, I believe, one stop in McLeod, so check that out and yeah, don't drink and drive. All right, with that, we will move on to item number seven, or sorry, item number six, committee reports. Were there any committees that met since the last meeting?
Finance Committee met. So we met last Monday. Not a lot to report. We were reviewing the budget. We had, we'd hoped to have most of the actuals in for the last year. There's a couple of revenue sources that still get post-dated back, so we didn't get quite the, the full picture. But generally speaking, revenues are higher than expected, and then staff has done an amazing job. Might not be able to last, but holding back expenses. During this time where we're building the, our Public Works Building. Public Works Building itself, you know, we originally budgeted at a hundred thousand for this past year. And then we moved it up to two hundred thousand. We only spent a hundred and fifty, so we're actually, I mean. Worse than what we started off with beginning of the year, but less than what we had anticipated halfway through, so. You know, I think we, we have had struggles getting past the general fund and into the enterprises. The enterprise, one of them's being dealt with tonight, and we consider that separately. But for the most part, we were reviewing how the year turned out the prior year, and then we unanimously asked for staff. This has to do mostly with a audit recommendation, but we've been a little bit lax doing budget updates for our mid-year. You know, we have a two-year budget, it's the second year. We often don't come back and, you know, re-project, but if anything's off by significant percent, whether it's revenue or expenses. We hope to recommend to council just a, a list of budget amendments for this current year in the near future. That's all.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item number seven, approval of the minutes for the meeting of July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Moved to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. What was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed or approved. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number eight, the consent agenda, which today consists of one item, the check register for seven thirteen to seven twenty-six of two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda approved. With that, we'll move on to item number nine, public hearing. Today, we have a public hearing. Discuss and solicit comments on the submittal of the Community Development Block Grant. CDVG accomplishments and closeout report for the Dunsmere Micro Enterprise Assistance Program, comma, twenty, dash, CDGB, dash, twelve, zero, eight.
Mayor and council, so at the end of every CDVG cycle, we have to conduct a public hearing and solicit comments. And we have Quentin here, if he wants to speak on that a little bit before we solicit those comments, so.
Okay, good evening, everybody. As a reminder, my name is Quentin Gaddy. I'm the Director of Business Development for Siskiyou Economic Development, and I'm the Director of the Shasta Cascade Small Business Development Center. This grant was a competitive grant that the city of Dunsmere. Applied for with Siskiyou Economic Development in June of two thousand twenty. We were awarded the grant in June of two thousand twenty-one. And it ran in a three-year contract until June of two thousand twenty-four, so it closed on June twentieth.
Could you elaborate on a little bit, I don't remember, so basically what you're saying is we worked with you to get the grant and is it only with us or is it with other cities too?
No, this one was only with you guys, but, but if you recall, we also did this at the same time as we applied for the COVID relief CDVG funding as well. So we also had a micro enterprise program that this, that ran through the city of Dunsmere, but had every city and the county. As co-applicants on a MOU with the city of Dunsmere on that one. That, that one, we closed out. Last fall, if you recall, that, that one assisted twenty-nine micro enterprises, and so we did this at, at the same time. So this program sort of sat on hold for a little bit while we spent down all the COVID funds first, because those had a tighter, a tighter expenditure. And it was a grant for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I have good news and I have bad news regarding the performance of the grant. I'll, I'll start with the bad news, which was not every penny of this grant was spent down. We did, we did spend seventy percent of it, and the reason of this was primarily because of business underwriting requirements. So this grant could provide up to twenty thousand dollars to a business, but that was contingent upon, you know, successful underwriting. Even though this was a grant, it was treated as a business loan, so there are some businesses who receive awards as small as five thousand dollars. There are some who receive the max award of twenty thousand dollars. At the end, this supported ten different micro enterprises in, in the city of Dunsmere, and we were able to grant out a hundred thirty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars that went directly to micro enterprises. This, the, the basic conditions of this grant was businesses had to have, you know, first of all. Because it's treated like a business loan in terms of underwriting, they had to be viable businesses. They had to be up and running. They had to have either documented investment that already went into the business. They had to have documented cash flow. And they had to be able to, if this was a loan, demonstrate that they would be able to repay it. But we are not requiring repayment. Additionally, they had to demonstrate how these grant funds were going to increase the profitability of the business. So there are some that are food-based businesses that were able to use it to buy different equipment, whether it be a bread oven or robo-cues or things like that to increase their productivity. There are some like Darmara you mentioned earlier that were able to buy supplies to be able to teach classes to the community and things like that. So there's a wide range of how the funds were ultimately used, but the, the crux of the program was that this was to increase their profitability. This was really seen as, you know. A lot of businesses, you know, have really, really tight cash flows and they don't really have the reserves to be able to make those large upgraded investments. So this sort of came in and was able to provide those upgraded investments without eating into their cash flow. And so at the end of the day, we also had, so we had sixty-one thousand, two hundred fifty that was remaining that could have been granted out. And then twenty-three thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-five cents, which went towards the underwriting and the program delivery, working with applicants, et cetera. That was not spent. So that portion of the grant will be disencumbered. However, because the grant still met what are called the CDVG national objectives, which are principally benefiting low to moderate income individuals. We were able to meet our goals for the program and, and to serve as many people as we had hoped to serve. And so I can answer any questions about the operation of the program, you know, some after-action report, things we might do differently in the future. Some of the challenges that went with the underwriting, et cetera, so whatever questions that either the public or staff has, I can answer.
I have a, questions about the underwriting, so we can understand them, because you, I've recommended many businesses, you know, talk to you. Some don't fit it, so it's kind of good to know roughly, and then I also wanted to comment on, do we set these standards when we adopt the program, like at the beginning, or is it really? The, the federal government kind of outlines what they're willing to do.
No, these underwriting standards come from the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department, and then there are overlays that come from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. So this is statute, so I can't, I can't just go Lucy Goosey on the writing.
We, we don't have the option to develop a program that targets things differently, like for businesses that are still small, but more than five employees, for example.
That would be, yeah, so, so that's something we can, this was specifically a micro enterprise program, and so the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department. Classifies a micro enterprise as a small business with five or fewer employees, including the owner, and that's not full-time equivalents. It's not, you know, a mix of part-time. It's, it's five heads under payroll. And so it, there are other programs that are called business assistance programs, which don't have that five employee cap, but they do have job creation requirements. And so we're running a business assistance program in the city of Waireka currently. That's structured a little differently. If I was to do this in the future. I would structure it as a business assistance program as opposed to the micro enterprise assistance program.
Thank you. And then all, all ten in this particular case were actual Dunsmere businesses?
Correct. Every, every business had to have a, you know, so what we could do in the program guidelines is set like who, who is eligible, what they could use funds for, sort of like the, the spirit, the intent of the program without. Changing the underwriting requirements, and so every business who applied had to have an active Dunsmere city license and either live or operate within the city of Dunsmere.
Thank you so much. This program's amazing. I know we used to run a much more cumbersome program when I first got on council, that was still a loan program, so it's great to also get to the point where it's a grant.
Especially after, you know, when we applied for it, it was right in the thick of COVID, so we were really looking at, how can we launch as many dollars. Out to the community as possible to reinvest in, really, the commercial downtown was the focus, but we also assisted a couple of home-based businesses as well and online businesses.
Excellent. Appreciate all the hard work.
All right, with that, we'll move on to public comments.
Awesome. Thank you to open the public hearing.
Or open the public hearing.
Yes.
I would also like to comment, thank you for, City Manager and Finance Director for interacting with. Quentin, Small Business Administration, because I'm sure there was a lot of interaction when this program was launched.
Yeah, Manya, Blake, Wendy, we're all really, in, in addition to Dustin, I would also like to give a shout out to Len Foreman and Mark Rowley. They're two community members who volunteered to serve on the CDVG Loan Committee, and they helped approve every one of these grant awards that went out. We deliberated over them. Some of them were adjusted through this process, were either increased or decreased based on, you know, market conditions and things like that, so they are also, you know, big help. So it really, it really took a village, so thank you to everyone involved.
Mr. Mayor, it might be nice to, somewhere down the line, acknowledge their support and give them credit for that, because they really do right up front help businesses survive, thrive, so.
All right, with that, we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
And we'll open up public comments, same rules as general public comment, three minutes, thirty-second warning. We'll do everyone in the room first, followed by the people on Zoom. Please limit any comment to this public hearing and this particular item.
Still Peterarth, fifty-eight, fifty-nine Sacramento Avenue. I am as appreciative of all of the hard work with the notion, when I moved up here. The notion that we're a low-income community, that we're trying to rebuild our economy, and that entitles us. To essentially grant money to support existing incumbent businesses and new businesses. It was totally dysfunctional when I first served as city council member and mayor. The city had a portfolio of non-performing loans. There were no guidelines of the nature that Quentin talked about. And eventually, it totally fell apart. One of my business tenants was successful and got a maximum twenty thousand dollar grant. It's made all the difference in their business. My comment to the city is. I guess the question, why don't you have an economic development committee? You need some leadership to connect the dots between federal funding, state funding, and county funding. To have a small business center, someone who comes to town with a new business. Why in the world wouldn't you have a one-stop place for them to go? And. Never ever should the city be in a position where you want a competitive grant to give out grant money to businesses and you left money on the table. You could not get it done. That should be an embarrassment. To all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alex. I still live in Dunsmere. I would like to ask. What did you do to advertise this micro monies so that people in Dunsmere knew about it? I mean, I pretty keep my ear to the, you know, as to what's going on, and I, I didn't know anything about this potential money for small businesses. What did you do to advertise for this? I mean. Like I, I mentioned, I would, I would like to. Help the city of Dunsmere by diverting green waste, give the citizens of Dunsmere a place to haul their wildfire fuels problems around their house. Rather than having to haul it all the way at expense to take it to, to Blackbeet Transfer Station. So that would help eliminate the wildfire fuels problem. It could make compost in the area, and there's money. There's money left on the table, as he mentioned. To do these kinds of things, but now it's gonna be unencumbered. Put it back into the general fund. Oh, isn't that great? So all of you guys can decide how the money is gonna be spent rather than giving it to small businesses, citizens of Dunsmere that can spend it. That's who I see it. I mean, on the agenda tonight is unencumbrance. People need to know what unencumbered means. That means money is taken from that pocket of money that should have gone to small businesses and is now gonna go into the general fund. Tell me I'm wrong. Please, tell me I'm wrong.
You're wrong.
I'll talk to you later, Bruce, thanks.
Oh, you're wrong.
Okay.
All right, any other further public comments? Anyone on Zoom? And, no, we do have one. You wanna unmute him? Steven?
Mark, go, Mark, go ahead and speak.
Can you hear us, or can we hear you?
I can hear you. I wasn't sure if you were calling.
There you go. Yep, go ahead.
Excellent. Well, what I wanted to say, I agree totally with Alex said. You're right. It's, it's a great thing that you're doing. I also wanted to go back. I wasn't able to raise my hand enough, but to what Peter said, I agree. I would love the opportunity to address city council. With the plan. I, and I believe we, we should be talking more. I, I, I'm in, in full agreement with that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
I'd like to say something I've been wanting to say for a while, just real quick. Before anybody wants to do anything with anybody, I'd like to be able to have an inspection of the buildings that we're going to do something with. I'd like to be able to have the fire marshal go into buildings that somebody would like to work on. And once somebody allows people to go in and do inspections.
So point of order?
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
I think.
Do you want to clarify the unencumbered comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll clarify for questions that Alex brought up. So undercomer doesn't mean that we get to keep the money. That money is program associated, goes back to HCD and back to the state. And then if they don't spend it all, it goes back to the feds. We don't get to keep that money.
So it's not a back and forth, please?
It is, it is not the city's money. It was a program specifically designed around certain criteria. And as far as advertising and marketing that, I can assure you, Quentin knows every business owner in this entire town and had met with all of them and had, unfortunately, because of the requirements of the program, had to disqualify many of them. So we were only actually able to fund ten. And we tried and tried and but it is what it is. I'm just grateful that we were able to get a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars back into the community and help those businesses.
And no back and forth. But all right, with that, close the public hearing or any more discussion before, right? Oh, that I'd just like to thank, thank you for getting as much money as you did out into the community. So, all right. With that, we will close the public hearing for this evening. And move on to item number ten, old business. First off, item number A, discuss and approve solid waste rate study and approval to issue prosecute team hearing notice.
All right, Mayor and Council, we've been working diligently on this with Dave, Dave Davis, who we have online here. Blake and I have been working with him for almost a year now to try and get this study out. And so before you, we have the, the study associated with all the different rates and expenses and everything associated with solid waste and where it's at currently. And then, and then we'll be discussing issuing Proposition two eighteen hearing notice and then the timeline. So, Dave, if you're ready to share your screen, go ahead and then he has a little bit of a presentation that we can discuss.
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Real quick, let's give everyone a opportunity to turn their chairs around, but the TV is not working. Yeah. So if everyone wants to turn their chairs around so they can see the presentation.
And let me ask, is this pretty, fill it up your whole screen or do you see two?
Minimize them.
Okay, I see what you see. Let me know when you're ready.
All right, I, I think we're ready.
All right. Well, Mayor and Council members, my name is David Davis. I'm with a firm called MSW Consultants. And the city has retained us to do a solid waste rate study of the solid waste enterprise fund. And I'm going to be presenting tonight on the proposed solid waste rates. And the presentation is going to take four parts. I'm going to talk about some background, things that are going on in the state and in the industry. I'm going to talk about your solid waste enterprise fund, kind of bring it down more to Dunsborough. I'm going to talk about the proposed new rates and the approval process and schedule. So those are the four parts of the presentation. And then just to start off with the background, as your speaker earlier said, there's a new law called SB thirteen eighty three, and it's one of four laws that govern solid waste in the state of California. You may be familiar with AB nine thirty nine, which was passed back in nineteen eighty nine. And this requires jurisdictions to divert a certain amount of waste from the landfill. And then more recently, AB three forty one and eighteen twenty six required commercial businesses to participate in recycling. And the focus of these laws was to preserve landfill space. You may remember the garbage barge. So this is the reason why a lot of the cities in the state have recycling. But more recently, with the passage of SB thirteen eighty three, the focus is more on keeping organics out of the landfill and not as much the focus of being keeping or preserving landfill space. So as your speaker mentioned, when you put organic material into the landfill and you deprive it of oxygen, it breaks down and it emits, emits methane, which is a heat trapping gas. And it's also important to remember that when we talk about organics, it's not just food waste and grass clippings and what you'd call green waste, but also cardboard and paper, the things that are what you'd consider dry recyclables. Those are also organic materials. So while this law does cover organic waste as a practical matter, it, it covers all recycling. And the most important thing about this law is that where these previous laws required commercial businesses to recycle, they didn't have any enforcement mechanism. And this new law does have an enforcement mechanism. So what happens is, is CalRecycle, the state agency responsible for regulating solid waste in the state, enforces upon the jurisdictions and the jurisdictions are required to enforce a waste generators. The partial good news for Dunsborough is that there is a waiver provision in the law. So jurisdictions with fewer than seventy five hundred people aren't required to implement this new law until twenty twenty seven. But when twenty twenty seven comes around, the city of Dunsborough is going to be required to implement a source separated collection of organics and recyclables. And just to further show you the complexity of the law and the, and I kind of invasiveness, there are six areas. So not only are you required to collect organics, you need, every jurisdiction is going to set up an edible food recovery program. There's enhanced requirements for education and outreach. There are monitoring and compliance requirements. And there's also a requirement that all jurisdictions procure a certain amount of organic content recyclable material. And they also need to ensure that they have access to adequate capacity. So it's the most significant change in regulations in the last thirty years.
Question?
Yes, sir.
We just, a little while ago, I don't know if you were listening, but I had asked the city manager about what we have as far as recycling now. And we're now in a recycling desert, if you will. So it seems kind of hard to imagine that we're going to go from nothing now to this new program. How was, how was the recycling industry responding to what I understand now is a lot of materials that they can't really make use of?
Well, you're kind of stealing my thunder a little bit. This China sword, what I've got on this slide, what happened a few years ago is that China stopped accepting recyclable materials. And as a result, the market value of recyclables plummeted. And we're still feeling the impacts of that. And this is why your opportunity center is probably not accepting recyclables anymore. Because back in the day, they would collect those recyclables and they would have a certain market value. And it was a, it was a money making proposition for them. But now, because, and, and same thing with haulers. Haulers would collect the recyclable materials and then use the revenue from that material to offset their operating costs. So for example, they would take, you know, a truckload of recyclables to a material recovery facility. And they might receive fifteen or twenty five dollars a ton from that facility. Now, when they take it to a facility, they have to pay to get rid of it. Not quite as much as, as landfilling it, but it's gone from a situation where you'd get revenue from recyclables to where we are now is where a lot of jurisdictions have to pay to get rid of it. Does that answer your question?
Well, it, it does as much as you're able to answer it. I know it's a conundrum right now, but that seems to be one of the biggest challenges we're going to have if we can't even get some recycling now, let alone in five years, four years.
Yeah, and, and it's definitely something that's statewide, creating upward pressure on solid waste rates across the state. So on the slide you see in front of you is a kind of a flyer that was put out by the League of California Cities, where they surveyed cities across the state and they asked them, are they expecting increases in their solid waste rates? And a third are expecting between one and ten percent. Another third between eleven and twenty. And then twenty percent of the cities were expecting a increase of about thirty percent or more. And there's a few cities that were expecting thirty percent increases. So this is a, something that's happening statewide. And the city of Dunsborough is kind of getting swept up into this trend. Does that help a little?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. And just other things like in the industry is that, you know, the cost of steel has increased. And then now that all this organic material is going to be source separated and collected, there needs to be a place to take it. So all across the state, the industry has been ramping up to build and expand existing organic processing facilities. So not only do you have the cost of actually implementing the regulations, you have some other industry trends that are also adding to those regulations or the, the impact of those regulations and creating upward pressure on solid waste rates across the state. So that's the background. Now I'm going to talk about your solid waste enterprise fund. And to do that, I'm going to look at three things, your operating results, your projected expenditures and your enterprise fund in general. So this first slide shows the proposed operating results. If you don't adjust rates, if you leave rates where they are, this, you're going to have cash of like negative three hundred thousand dollars at the end of twenty twenty four. So the finance and I, director and I looked at this more recently. And a more updated cash balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty four is negative three hundred and forty thousand. And I have to apologize because the, this table in the report is inaccurate. It shows that you have a shortfall of nine thousand dollars. But as of June thirty, twenty twenty four, you have a negative balance in your solid waste enterprise fund of three hundred and nine thousand dollars. And what this shows is over these years, your revenue, if you leave rates the same, it's going to go up a little bit due to volume growth, because we assume that you're going to have about one percent volume growth over the years. I'll talk about operating expenses in a minute. But see, you've got a shortfall in twenty twenty four of about two hundred thousand dollars. And if rates stay where they are, that shortfall is going to grow over time. And as a result, you have to find the money to either borrow from another fund or it would just, it just gets.
If someone was on the finance committee and worked with you on some of these numbers, I just want to point out, you can clearly see in two thousand twenty seven, when our waiver expires, that that number doubles. It goes from like two hundred and thirty two thousand dollar deficit per year to a four hundred and eighty six thousand dollar deficit per year at the current rates. I just want to point out, since we just talked about that, the state mandate and the waiver expiring in twenty twenty seven, I just wanted to point that out to everyone on that.
That's correct. And here's some detail on that, that change, right? So kind of the three big expense items here is we've got a fifteen thousand dollar item in there, which is the solid waste enterprise funds portion of your public works building. So that starts in twenty twenty six and gets carried on through all the years. And that's, that's what's driving this increase here. And then, so I've organized your city expenses into three areas. One is your city expenditures, which is the operator of your street sweeper and just other miscellaneous city expenses that the city incurs to oversee the solid waste enterprise. This is the amount of money that you pay to Clemens to collect the waste. And see here, this is in twenty twenty seven, they're going to be required to buy a couple of trucks and a bunch of new containers to start this source separated collection program. So that's, like you've said, that's the big driver of the change in twenty twenty seven. The other thing that is in here is in twenty twenty seven, there's the beginning of a new, a payment for a new street sweeper. So we've budgeted about half a million dollars to pay for a new sweeper. And the annual payment for that, over a seven year period at four percent is eighty two thousand dollars. So that eighty two thousand dollars is in this city expenditures here. That's, that's what's driving the city expenditures up. And this is about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar swing. And that is due to Clemens having to incur, they're having to buy new trucks and containers as well. And, and a new operator, right? So that's what's really driving this change. And over there, it kind of levels out once we implement that. But that's what's going to happen when the city is required to comply with SB thirteen eighty three, starting in twenty twenty seven.
On the tipping fees, what was it prior, I understand tipping fees went up considerably. So before twenty twenty three, what were the tipping fees?
The tipping fees, I will have to take a quick look here. I'm going to let you peek.
I think, Dave, I think we calculated that it, so it just happens to line up. We get about a thousand tons a year. So current, in twenty twenty three, there were eighty two dollars a ton. They're now currently eighty six and we're looking to go to a hundred and seven dollars a ton. And that's for the county to just break even. That's kind of what the projection is. But I haven't got an official number from them yet. They're still don't have it ironed out with their new contractor for Blackbeet Transfer.
You say their, their costs are a hundred and seven, is what they've?
That's, that's about where they're at. They weren't done with the full negotiations of our new contract operator. But that's their expectation is around one oh seven to one ten.
What company's taking over Blackbeet Transfer?
Republic.
Okay, so in the two scenarios that I'm going to show you, the, the expenses stay the same. So, and this is a graph, and this basically shows the blue bars are your revenue. The orange bars are your expenses. And you can see how the expenses exceed the revenues. And right here, all these lineups, this is where your rates don't change. All these blue bars stay flat. And then this is the increase in your expenditures here in fiscal twenty twenty seven. And it kind of levels off here, but it goes up due to inflation and things like that. So this just kind of gives you a snapshot and shows you that you kind of, it gets ugly here on the cash. So now I'm going to show you the same three slides with the projected rate adjustments. So what this shows is that, oh, there's two things going on here. We're going to solve this problem with a combination of rate adjustments and intra-city borrowing. So in order to get the solid waste enterprise fund back up to above zero, we're projecting that we borrow from another city fund. I think it's the, the sewer fund or the water fund to keep it to where it break evens in cash. And then over here, we're going to pay it back. So what this shows up above is the operating results. So this shows that you had four hundred and fifty two thousand in revenue, six forty seven in expenses and a shortfall of a hundred and ninety five thousand. As of the end of twenty twenty three, you had negative a hundred and fourteen thousand. So if we combine that shortfall with what you had negative, but we add about three hundred thousand in borrowing, that gets us up to almost break even. So the, so this rate adjustment, these proposed rates are combined with some intra-city borrowing in order to get the solid waste enterprise fund where it needs to be over time. So what this shows is that we'll do some borrowing initially here of about six hundred thousand dollars. Like this three hundred thousand plus a hundred thousand dollars a year through twenty twenty seven. And then by then, the rates will be high enough where we'll be able to start to pay it back a little bit here. And that shows where you're taking it out of the enterprise fund and putting it back where it came from. So this top of this chart shows the, the, the operating results, right? It's basically the revenue minus the expenses shows the shortfall. So we're still going to have a shortfall in twenty twenty five, hopefully break even in twenty twenty six. Another little bit of shortfall because you have all those new expenses coming in in twenty twenty seven. So you're still going to go a little bit negative. But then here in twenty twenty eight and twenty nine, you start to get more of a surplus where you're able to pay back some of that money that you borrowed from the other fund. So your cash is going to, and what this here, this is a reserve target. Uh, so your cash is gonna, um, and what this here, this is a reserve target. And this is where we think we'd like to see, um, your cash balance. And it's based on twenty five percent of your operating, uh, expenses. So what this shows with the combination of intra-city borrowing and the rate adjustments. Uh, you'll be able to slowly get the solid waste enterprise fund, uh, back where it belongs. And, uh, pay for the new sweeper and comply with SB thirteen eighty three. And also contribute to the, uh, public works barn. Does that make sense? Do you have any questions?
Um, I had a question. I, I don't think you would know about it, but I, I just kind of remember, didn't several years ago? We have an intra-city loan between two enterprise clients. Does anyone remember that?
Yes, yes, we did. And, um, that was twenty twenty one, I believe. Um, and our revenues were, there were, I'd have to look back at it and get the details. But yes, we have done one before, um, and, and this one, we, we worked really hard. Cause initially we were, we were considering what does the rates look like without, right? Or, and so that's why we spread those out farther in order to keep the rates down longer as, as long as we could. Um, in order to get back to our, you know, trying to meet our reserve requirements. And, and so, um, yes, we have done one in the past. Um, I just don't remember the details off.
It was in my mind that I'm wondering, I guess it must have paid it off at some point. I just don't recall that closing up, but that's okay. That's all.
So, and this, uh, to wrap up this enterprise fund, uh, this is, uh, what the numbers look like in graphical form, right? So, uh, here we've got a shortfall, but then we're, this is where we're, the green items here is when we're, um, taking money from one fund. And putting it into this fund. So it, uh, brings the cash up a little bit and it offsets this shortfall. And the red line is the target. That's where we're trying to get to over time. So here you start to, you start to break even a little bit in that one year where you have a little bit of a surplus. But then here's when all those expenses go up, uh, so you have a little bit of a shortfall in that year. Now here's where you start getting the surpluses, starting in fiscal twenty eight. Um, and then that starts to bring this cash balance up and you can start paying back the intra-city borrowing. And then slowly over time, you can get your cash over to, uh, your target balance, which is, uh, what we're trying to accomplish here. Over a long period of time. So that's just the graphical, um, representation of the numbers that I showed on the previous slide. Um, so now I'm going to show, this is like kind of the big picture, the aggregate, what, what the solid waste enterprise fund experience is. And now I'm going to show you what, um, how it impacts your individual rate payers. Um, so in order to do this, um, we're recommending that the city increase rates twenty four percent each year. For the next three years. And then it's going to have to increase rates. It can start to kind of tap on the brakes here in twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine. And get back to, uh, this is kind of what a, a normative rate, your five percent. And what this shows is what the rates are now. So right now your rate payers for a sixty five gallon can, they're paying twenty five dollars and eleven cents. And when this rate adjustment goes into effect, uh, that rate is going to go up six dollars. To thirty one dollars and forty one cents. And then the following year, it's going to go up another seven dollars and another nine dollars. So by the time you get to twenty twenty seven, your rates will be forty seven and fifty seven. And then here it, it levels off a little bit. So in order to, um, accomplish all the things in the solid waste enterprise fund that I described earlier. Um, the portion of the public works, uh, building, uh, purchasing a new, uh, street sweeper. And complying with SB thirteen eighty three, uh, these are the rate adjustments that are going to be required to do that. And these are the rates for carts. And then you all, also the same thing for dumpsters. Dumpsters are going to go up. The same twenty four percent in the first three years, followed by a twenty percent, then a nine percent, then a five percent. And these are the rates that your commercial customers that have, uh, dumpsters. So probably a common, very common level of service is a two yard dumpster once a week. And right now those people are paying a hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifteen cents. And then it's going to go to a hundred and seventy, two ten, two sixty one and three thirteen. So those are the proposed rates and the last part of the presentation is the approval process. So, um, these rates are subject to, uh, Prop two eighteen, which is part of the state's constitution. So in order to raise these rates, the city is required to, uh, send all of its rate payers a forty five day notice. So two things, they have to send out a notice and they have to conduct a public hearing. Uh, so the action that you're taking tonight is to approve the release of a Prop two eighteen notice. That includes, um, all the rates that I previously discussed. And to also set a, um, public hearing, uh, for, uh, October third. So it's going to take a few days to get the notice in the mail. So we need to make sure that there's forty five days between when the notice goes out and when we conduct the public hearing. Uh, so the public hearing is scheduled for October third. Uh, the notice is going to include the proposed rates, the reason for the increase and the procedure for submitting a protest. Uh, so the way it works is that, uh, the notice instructs all of your rate payers. That if they want to protest, uh, the increase in rates. Uh, they can do so by providing a written protest to the city or by showing up at the public hearing. And protesting at the public hearing. And if there are more than fifty percent of the rate payers that submit written protests. Then the rate adjustment dies right there. It does not go forward. But if there are fewer than fifty percent of the rate payers that protest, then the public hearing is conducted. And the elected officials vote on the rate adjustment. And if a majority of the elected officials, uh, vote to approve the rates. Then the rates go into effect. And in this case, that go into effect, uh, November first. Um, so that's, uh, oops, that's the wrong date. But anyway, that's, um. That's the approval process and that, that concludes my presentation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Uh, the question I have is, have you, is there a prepared, um. Script we can send out with the notice that gives them some information? Is that, you know, in other words, to lighten up the shock? Is there something you can provide that will help us, uh, minimize the shock when they get this in the mail?
Uh, the notice will explain the reason for the increase, including, um, SB thirteen eighty three. Um, and the industry trends that I talked about. So the notice will, um, have a real brief description. Uh, of kind of the presentation that I just made as far as the industry and, and how rates are going up across the state.
And additionally, we can make the, the slideshow he presented tonight, we can make that available online as well as the, and. And the study will also be online. So they're available for people to, to view and read.
I just, of all the two A Ts, I've been a part of, I just know that the, the key is, is to have a very clear, uh, description. When we get together for the public hearing, that's going to be the key.
Counsel to approve the notice. Notice prepared already or?
I, I'll be preparing that in the next couple of days.
Okay.
So one thing I'd like to point out now before we go into public comment as well, is that this covers the worst case scenario. And covers planning for the worst case scenario. In terms of expenditure, in terms of the situation we're in right now, you know, the fund is in a deficit. We owe, the fund is three thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars in the hole and it's losing seven thousand dollars. So there will need to be some adjustments for that. But on the flip side of that, the biggest change from all this, or the biggest jump after we fix the current problem. Is that jump in twenty twenty seven, when then, when we lose our waiver and the new law goes into effect. And those, some of those rates pretty much close to double. If we get another waiver, we don't have to raise the rates that high. We obviously won't know if we're going to getting, going to be getting another waiver. This will allow us to, this, doing this would allow us to raise the rates if we don't. But just because we have the rate, the ability to raise rates that high, doesn't mean we actually need to, if we get that waiver. So obviously the main point here is we need to cover the costs and meet the reserve target. This is planning for us not getting a waiver and us needing a new street sweeper.
And through the chair, we have historically lowered rates for solid waste.
Yeah. And so.
Because we were collecting too much.
So one thing here is that, oh, I was going to get it.
Sorry.
Um, one thing I was going to get into here is sweet sweeper is a big maybe. They have it on here as being needed to purchase in twenty twenty seven. It may not make it till then. It may make it longer. I think Dennis might be able to speak to that a little bit more, but. If it makes it longer, we may be able to push that rating back.
It's broke down today.
So, depending on if we can get it fixed again, you know, so depending on how the, the street sweeper goes. Really depends on how, whether or not. So that's the, those are the two big ones is whether or not we get another waiver and whether or not we need to buy another street sweeper. And maybe not when we need to buy or not, not if we need to buy another street sweeper, but when we need to buy a street sweeper. So, um, Julian pointed out, one reason that we're in this situation now is that. There was a surplus above our reserve target years ago. Those rates, the rates were then lowered, they were never corrected and therefore the fund is now in a deficit. So, um. So, well, like the biggest thing is really twenty twenty seven, whether we get that waiver or not will determine. Whether or not the rates need to go up as much as they're specified in the two eighteen.
I've got some more thoughts, but I'll just wait for the discussion.
So, um, with that, are there any more clarifying questions before we move into public comments?
I, I have a number of, uh, thoughts, but no clarifying questions.
Just, just one other statement, um, also carb compliance is also coming down the pipe. And, and the street sweeper does not eat carb compliance. It's one on our list.
And, uh, carb is the California Air Resource Board. And so, uh, for example, uh, Clemens has had to replace a significant number of their trucks in the last couple of years. Because they need to be at a tier three or a tier four clean emissions standard for the California Air Resource Board. Um, I believe a majority of our equipment, including the street sweeper is a tier zero. Which means that it would not be an eligible piece of equipment to be used outside of emergency situations. So at some point, um, we will not be able to use that type of equipment at any point.
That's something that we have to deal with at the ski park constantly as well as we have to buy new snow cats. That are a certain level of emissions standard and retire old ones. Uh, even though those old ones, and not your, you retire the old ones, you use the old ones less, even though they'll still work. They just no longer meet with the state requirements and for reporting, we just can't fit them in our emissions budget. So that's something that we have to deal with. In large businesses as well. So, all right, with that, any other questions or statements? Right with that, I will open this item up to public comment. Same rules as every other public comment, three minutes, thirty second warning. We'll do everyone in the room first, followed by Zoom. Could we get this, uh, switch back over from the slide to the participants, uh, Zoom participants? Uh, please state your name, uh, and address at the beginning and please limit your discussion to this particular item. All right, with that, uh, I will open this to public comment.
Peter Rth, fifty eight, fifty nine Sacramento Avenue, uh. First of all, hats off to council member Luke Casey, who has exhibited the leadership. Uh, this is an issue that everybody would love to avoid. The citizens of Dunsmere, the businesses of Dunsmere are going to come unglued when they hear the presentation you just heard. There's a well-known phenomenon in utility rate setting called rate shock. People simply cannot pay those kinds of rate increases, especially lower income people, and they won't. They will either vote no and defeat your proposed rate increases, or they'll start dumping their waste in the river and the forest. They simply will not be able to bear those kinds of solid waste rates. Uh, having served on the solid waste committee under Chair Juliana. Uh, it's obvious this is a statewide problem. It's a county problem and it's a city problem. So the first thing I would recommend is sitting down with our county supervisor. The architecture, as Juliana explained it, is that all of the cities have agreed to cooperate at the county level. To deal with this problem. There are huge economies of scale, as Alex knows. In disposing of solid waste, all the different categories from cardboard to green waste. Uh, does it make sense for us to make some of our airport property available? To build a scalable plant for carbonization and compost and all of that? Are there better sites in the county? But the city of Dunsmere can't do this by itself, period. I would be looking for grants. I support the state in its environmental goals, but when it translates to rural counties. We're going to need state help. We've been down this road before with water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure. The rates went up. But we were able to borrow millions of dollars. We were able to secure low interest loans. And we're no longer polluting the upper Sacramento River. It took a while, but we did it. Uh, I would certainly consult with the League of California Cities. There, this is going on all over California. So let's try to be smart before we give the ugly news. To our residents and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, a couple of definitions. Source separation. That means instead of one plastic bin at your house, you need two. One's for the landfill and one's the green bin. It'll probably be green. So Clemens has to buy another bin, that so everybody's get two bins. So that's one expense. Um, three bins? Okay. Four bins. I, I, I come from San Francisco and they have, they have four bins. It's kind of neat to see them all lined up, black, blue, green, yellow, all the bins. So bins cost money. Citizens don't pay that directly. Clemens buys those. And then they raise the rates, or you guys raise the rates actually rather, ha, here they go between, between our really wonderful trash. Collection agency. I, I gotta hand it to him. I said hello to Jessica that was driving the trash can this morning. I had put some green waste into a trash bin. It's amazing to me that if you don't use your bin. If you're a homeowner and you live away and there's nobody in your empty house, it's your vacation house, you still have to pay the same rates. Even if you're not using your trash bin, but that's the way it is. I'm not, you can't change everything. Um, another definition that I enjoyed your report there, um, but old and new. Again, I mentioned this law when I spoke earlier. It was in two thousand sixteen, that was eight years ago. That this bill was passed. Ex-council member Arthur knew about it four years ago. He invited me to join the solid waste committee. He was concerned about it four years ago. Old versus new. Sir, this is not a new law. This is an old law and it's time we stop kicking the can down the road. Another word, waiver, waiver means kicking the can down the road. We should not be kicking the can down the road. Let's solve the problem today. Other cities are doing it. He suggested we talk to other counties, economy of scale. Yes, that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Holt, some good ideas here. I'm going to throw one out. And I think there may be some bureaucratic reasons why it's not a great idea, but I like to throw it out every, every once in a while. Some of us don't have as much waste as others. So the thought is that if you could, um, you know, maybe if you only had a pickup, uh, twice a month or every other week. That you would have a lower rate, which would encourage people not to have as much waste also. Just throwing that out there as an idea. The other thing is, um, the only question I had in this very thorough presentation is, it wasn't entirely clear to me. So if there are more than fifty percent of the rate payers who submit a written protest. Then it won't go through. The only thing that was unclear about that is. He also said that you could protest at this public meeting. If, my question is, if you protest at the public meeting, is that count the same as if you submitted a written protest? So, no, it's not the same thing. So it has to be a written protest?
Well, we'll answer that after.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Dwight Bailey, fifty nine oh six Castle Avenue.
Dwight Bailey, fifty nine oh six Castle Avenue. I did hear this presentation before when it was presented to the finance committee. A couple of items I have right off the bat, organic garbage is already currently against the law to take to a landfill, there are no landfills set up for it. That is why they give bread, day old bread to senior citizens. Because they cannot legally take a pickup load of that to the landfill, I think it's a hundred cubic feet or something, about a large pickup. That's why they give it away, it's organic, because you have things like smells and odors. So even after these programs come together, there is no possible way that any landfill within range is going to accept any organic garbage. Household garbage, not necessarily green waste, that's one concern. The other concern is that we just mentioned the rules on two eighteen things, it used to be, when I read Ledley's in the past. That if you got a notice in your bill and it said you called up to ask, I understand it's gonna be a rate increase. By law, they were required to consider that a protest. It said if three percent of the population answered that prior to it even a public hearing, that it had to go on the ballot. That has changed now, what is missing is the fact that you just spent fifty thousand dollars on this survey. The fact is, the public out here has no money to defend this. There are very few people, including myself, that are knowledgeable enough to win and win a two eighteen fight. The last one we won was in Santa Cruz when they were going to have a Nicola jug on alcohol. Along the beach area, but not in the rich areas, the people drinking wine in the rich areas didn't have to pay, because that was lopsided, it was not considered a tax. It was considered a fee, that is a definition, two eighteen is to separate what is a tax, what is a benefit to the consumer and what is not. Simply racing the race because a new truck is needed. Number one, it's not going to be the same truck that they're going to take the garbage in. That's not gonna be the size of the truck, it's gonna be a much smaller truck, so you're projecting things that aren't gonna happen and you know that aren't gonna happen. My thing is, are we willing to inform the public enough to put a decent two eighteen fight up? To show that you guys need to go back to the drawing board. Without that, as public officials, it's very hard to walk both sides of this. I was on the sewer board in Cottonwood, California, and a very similar thing came up with this. And it is an almost impossible for a, any group of people to lead a successful two eighteen fight, so they, the people here are victims. And I would encourage you guys to look at more honest rates, within this was presented before at the planning, the, the finance committee, we were talking six percent over four years, now it's twenty four percent. Uh, there was some things that during that meeting, at same meeting, it said we are not gonna borrow from one fund to another. That was an important issue, now we are, so a lot has changed in the last few weeks.
Time's up, thank you. Right, any other further public comment? And I was gonna address a few things, any other further public comment before we close public comment this evening? Right, seeing none, I will close public comment on this tonight, and I just kinda wanted to address, um. A couple of things you said, cuz you did make some observations from finance committee and just to address it, so. After that particular finance committee meeting, Treasurer Urbino and I met with David, um, and Finance Committee or Finance Director Michelson. Uh, to go over a few issues that Treasurer Urbino had noticed, um, and really just flush out some things. And I don't remember the six percent, I remember that later, at the time, I remember there was nineteen percents.
It was nineteen percent for the first three years.
I remember nineteen percent, and then maybe it was six percent after that, um. But the, there was two big things that led to that jump from twenty four percent to, or nineteen percent to twenty four percent. And the, and going from maybe doing some interfund borrowing to that being necessary. And that was when the numbers got sent over from the city to, um, the firm. Uh, not sure whether it was the city's issue or the firm's issue, uh, but a number that was. A number that was supposed to be negative was entered into the spreadsheet as a positive number, which was the current fund balance. So, uh, the numbers that was looking at at that finance committee meeting before Treasurer Urbino and I met with the two of them. Um, showed that the fund was currently had, or with the number they were working off was a hundred something thousand positive, when it was actually a hundred and something. Negative, and that's what led to that increase in a percentage and the necessary, or in this, the need to do interfund borrowing. Because it was just all of a sudden, the starting number was three hundred thousand dollars worth off than it was originally. So that's why that change happened, I just wanted to make sure to clear that up for you. Um, and with that, um, we'll go into council discussion. Um, the one thing I, I think.
Really has to be made clear every time this comes up when we're doing a Prop two eighteen. Um, and that is that, um, we don't make up the cost of things. Um, you know, the things that we have to spend money on, whether it's tipping fees or the hauling or any of that. That's not something that we have flexibility in saying, well, we just won't pay the tipping fees cuz they're too big. So the whole point of a Prop two eighteen, I think, really has to be making it as pain, I know it's painful, it's painful to me and everybody else, but it's. It can't be more clear that these are the costs that we have, and until somebody puts in something at the airport for green waste or whatever. These are the projections that we have to live with, so, uh, the only thing I would say is, as far as explaining it, is explaining it in two terms, one of them is, is that we did make a mistake. The good news in that mistake was, is that for a period of time, you paid less. Unfortunately, now we're gonna have to catch up. Um, and then the other hand is that we're dealing with, um, requirements that are outside of our control. But, um, the bottom line is, is that to cheer on the idea that maybe we can. Get enough people to protest this and we won't have to raise the rates is a road to ruin unless we come up with some magic way of dealing with this some other way.
I guess I will make a few comments, um. I was very shocked by the percent increase needed and the continued increases at that rate over time. It, it does seem quite shocking, um, a gentleman, uh, from the community reached out, he hasn't given me permission to say his name necessarily. But, uh, had some really good points on how we might or may be able to. Uh, overcome some of these costs through both state grant opportunities, um, you know, waiver, it's not ideal, but. The California Assembly and our governor, they have no sense of what it's like to, to live in a small town or rural county. And they pass these laws that, that just don't work for us, I would love to have all the recycling and environmental protections. But if they want us to enforce them, they have to give us money, they have to provide that. It was mentioned that we've had very, very good luck with grants in the solid, or in the sewer and water funds. Uh, the sewer fund just received a seven point two million dollar grant, or hasn't received it yet, but the, uh, city has received the award. And will be conducting that, that, that is offsetting the cost of the current sewer rate. You know, building an infrastructure, so I am incredibly hopeful, especially after a brief interaction with this gentleman, uh, he's from the industry. I wanna engage with him, see if he'll potentially get more involved with the city, um, but look for ways going forward to both be a vocal advocate of relief from the state. But if the state wants us to do this, we need funds from the state, uh, our. Our areas will never reach the economy of scale to make this reasonable, even if we had the entire county forced into the system, it'd be better, but it's not gonna be necessarily reasonable, so I. I, I'm very concerned that we're not funding it now, so I, I guess my primary concern is today we're losing money, that has to stop. We have to at least fund our current operations, um, I know, uh, thanks to the many people involved in the solid waste committee. I know it's taken a number of years and that, that law that California passed has been really difficult to get around. I very much hope to come up with a solution that does not include those increases going forward into time. I do think, um, it would be irresponsible to not set a path forward that predicts profitability with our current operations. So however this works, you know, I, I'm, I'm supportive of raising the rates even drastically to make us break even. I, I think it's really important that we don't raise the rates, oh, that's our, you know, baseline and stop there, we need to look for ways to save money. And potentially be part of a, a group to, to stand up to the state if, if possible, I know there's not a lot of luck there, but we do need to be very aware of that, that issue. Um, and if the citizens want this, it needs to be a discussion, you know, I know there's a lot of positive things to have any green waste program, but it's going to come with costs, so we gotta monitor those. I have always had a personal, I guess, personal and or professional disagreement with the plans to borrow from other enterprise funds, it was expressed at the finance committee. Um, the last time. We passed the two eighteen on the sewer fund, we projected it borrowing from the water fund, I did not vote for that because it included a five hundred thousand dollar interfund loan. I have been told by our finance director that we never had to actually move those funds, so that was very nice and successful. Um, I, I think it's the wrong way to go about raising funds. You shouldn't have a fund that's designed to be a fee for a service, have enough money to give another fund. That, it's just, another enterprise fund shouldn't be a bank for the other enterprise funds, if, if we have the funds in the general fund. It needs to come from there, in my opinion, um, it should be repaid.
And could I, could I just, uh, on that point, um, within the document, we did not identify a recommendation for which fund to borrow it from. Uh, one of our initial conversations was a split, um, but one of the other conversations was taking a loan from the general fund pending how healthy that fund is and where it is at for the reserves. And so one of the recommendations from solid waste to finance committee before it made it to us was to keep it blank at this point. Um, but acknowledge that we would need to do that to make this work and keep it low.
Well, it was, it was presented to finance committee as sewer fund, so we kind of all, you know, had a heart attack.
Okay, that was not our original.
And they was like, no, it has to be water, and, well, I, I will just be clear, I, I didn't. I understand that we may have funds in water as we're getting ready for larger things, but ultimately our water fund needs every penny that's in it. If it doesn't, we need to lower water rates.
Yeah.
Um, so I just, I think it's disingenuous, I'd rather have lower water rates, if that's the case, and higher solid waste rates, but we should have. We should have fees that accurately represent what it costs to do these services.
Yep.
You know, that's kind of, in my mind, the definition of an enterprise should be that self-contained thing, um. I would also like to say, um, finance committee's definitely been discussing the public works building in the split. Could you remind me, um, Dustin, what the projected, uh, percentage for solid waste is?
I believe it was fifteen percent.
I think, yeah, I remember ten or fifteen percent being thrown out.
It's either ten or fifteen, I, I have it written on my board in my office, but I don't remember specifically, um.
And that not, that has not been approved yet, but it is completely practical that solid waste will use that facility to some extent, so it will be something.
And, and we do track all of our hours, and so we know how much time, we're, we will know from a data point how much time is allocated towards.
Please take the conversations in the hallway, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Also, always pause for a second, have you been hitting a few of those lights switches for me?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And so we do, we do allocate all of the public works wages accordingly, um, based on where they spend their hours. And so that's kinda where that percentage came from, we spent about fifteen percent of our time doing work associated with solid waste. Which includes all of our trash cans that we pick up three times a week in the parks and, and in downtown. And so that's kinda how we allocated that. But that's always up for discussion and negotiation, but we.
Well, I think my, my main goal was, uh, to, to make sure it's known what that percentage is, cuz it's not as if this particular fund is taking on the front of that building.
Correct.
Um, finance committee, uh, we have a recommendation, we've discussed how it would be split up, um. And that all funds that benefit from it and use it should pay some proportionate share, with the general fund being the largest, um, so anyway, I, yeah, uh. As far as the rates themselves go, I, I think this is shocking, and we need to be sensitive, and i- if there is a way to maybe. I mean, I, I'd be more comfortable, if anything, authorizing the first three years, as brutal as they are, but not looking as far out, but I, I think that might set us up for, for failure with what happens with the SB. Thirteen eighty-three, so I don't see a viable way for us to get there yet, but that is two and a half years away. That, that'll be yet to be determined, so I, I guess I'm just going on here, but, uh, my support will be contingent on it not being a interfund from an enterprise borrowing. Happy to have the general fund do it, uh, funds allow. But my recommendation would be even higher increases unfortunately, rather than confuse the public as to what the enterprise funds and fees go towards.
Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Wait, oh, I'm sorry.
Just two points that I wanted, uh, or three, actually, I don't know if we got to specific instructions on the two eighteen, if we've addressed that yet. Um, one of the questions for the comments was specific instructions on protesting, so the notice that's gonna be sent out, the forty-five day notice will have very specific instructions on how you protest that vote. Um, so I would strongly urge people to read that and follow those instructions very carefully. As someone who works for government, I have seen a number of people confuse that, and it's really unfortunate when that happens, um, but make sure to read that protest vote. Um, and, and that will go over all of that information, it is statutorily required to have that and be very clear to you. Um, if people are confused about how to protest the two eighteen proposed rates, please call city staff, we are mandated as government officials to walk you through that process. Um, I just wanted to make sure that that got addressed, um, so yeah, if you do hearsay with people. Um, you can most likely guarantee that your vote will not get counted correctly, please look at the notice. Um, or information on city's website, so the notice will be there as well. Um, the two things I wanted to cover is in relation to low income assistance. Um, there are several cities that do have what's called a URAP program, U R A P, which is a utility rate assistance program. It's something we talked about, I believe, at the last two eighteen process, um. I had voiced a, a interest in looking into those programs, I didn't find a lot at that time, but because of this conversation in solid waste being one of those rates going up. So significantly over the state, there are a number of compliant URAPs that do not violate Prop two eighteen, that's been the hard part with doing utility assistance programs. Is how that works with the two eighteen process, and so, um, I do have several cities that I have been looking into on how to do a URAP program. One of the difficulties with that is you can't change the rates in the rate study, but what the URAP program is, is that cities acknowledge that there are individuals in need of additional assistance, either seniors, unassisted. Uh, or, uh, fixed income disability, um, and those have dedicated a portion of their general fund to basically be a program they can apply for. Um, we haven't necessarily been in the most financially stable situation, um, but I think now we're at a point where I think the council could look at a URAP program pilot project. Um, there's a couple of smaller cities that have done a couple pilots to see how much interest there is, as well as just see how many people would be applying to that program. Um, so that's something I'd like to bring forward as a future agenda item in relation to addressing the concern for those on fixed income. Um, and then finally, uh, the one thing I would like to point out about grants is that there is a SB eight thirteen eighty-three, uh, local assistance grant. Um, unfortunately, CalRecycle is not seen as a priority agency within the state of California. And so with the budget deficit, it was one of the first department grant programs to be cut, so what I was gonna show you is, uh, the funding is to be determined by state budgets. Uh, current grant cycle, there are no grants, upcoming grant cycles, there are no upcoming grant cycles. Um, so one of the difficulties with grants is that they, there are some that have been available. Um, but unfortunately, when we go to apply for those, especially in the last year, they've been cut from the state budget. Um, so I have been looking for those, um, it's something that I talk to Dustin on a pretty frequent basis to try and find grants that meet the needs of the city for not just regular. Um, you know, other types of projects, but this as well, um, and unfortunately, this was a really great grant program that, that put in the state budget. Uh, we actually would have been guaranteed a certain amount, it was per capita type grant. Um, the other thing that's really difficult too is that the JPA, as Dustin has mentioned previously. Is not the most functional group at the county, and so doing any type of joint effort with the other jurisdictions in the county. Has been really, really difficult for that reason, and so one of the things we're trying to do is bolster the other communities to get on board with that. Um, unfortunately, we're at the mercy of other individuals who are interested in this, and from my experience working with the other jurisdictions. Dunsborough honestly cares a lot more than a lot of other jurisdictions, um, a lot of places are not doing anything, um, as per my work, Wyrika is not doing anything to address this at this point. Um, so it's just, it's really difficult to get the other cities on board, but it's something that we have as a city been very consistent. We're one of the few cities that shows up for every JPA meeting in Wyrika, um, and so we'll continue to do that, but it, that's been the difficulty with that type of regionalization. So, um, those are my comments for tonight.
I appreciate those, a great deal, um, I had a, a question based on your comment, just to clarify. Uh, I've been told there are fines if we aren't compliant with SB thirteen eighty-three.
Correct.
What are the fines, because it's fair to ask?
It's a not a determined fine, they basically come and they take a look at how far you are in implementation, and they make a determination based off of that. So it's not a. So it's not a.
David might, David might be aware of that.
Fine cities.
Yeah, they, they, uh, they have a range and it rains, it's on a per day basis. It's anywhere from five hundred dollars a day to ten thousand dollars a day, because they have to think about the Los Angeleses of the world. And they have, uh, kind of three, you know, there's, um. Kind of minor, medium and, and recalcitrant, right? So it, it, they have a lot of discretion. But that's the range that they give, and it's on a per day basis that jurisdictions are out of compliance.
Okay. Do, do you know of cities that have decided it's cheaper to pay the fine than implement the programs?
No, I don't know of any city like that, but there is a, there's a fairly long enforcement process. Uh, they, they basically do what they, they start the enforcement process with a compliance evaluation. And their goal is to do, um, a quarter of the jurisdictions in the state every year, so everybody gets looked at every four years. Uh, so it's kind of the luck of the draw. But, uh, it, it starts out with that compliance evaluation. And that can take, you know, two or three months, and then they have, if you pass, you're good. If not, you have a notice of violation. And you get between ninety and a hundred and eighty days to cure that notice of violation. And if you're unable to cure that notice of violation, then they put you on a corrective action plan. And that takes anywhere from one year and you can get it extended up to two years. Uh, so, uh, and as long as you get these extensions, as long as you're showing substantive, uh, uh, compliance. So, but it is a, it is a pretty serious process and a lot of, a lot of jurisdictions are concerned about it.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we could answer for the community that, that there are certain consequences.
And.
Very negative.
And just, just for pointed discussion, I do want to add, um, so. The county did receive a grant and they are currently in cycle for studying about trying to address the green waste issues. Um, but they're looking at a overarching study. I, Stephen and I worked together to actually submit a grant for climate, climate adaptation grant. And we just got notified last week that, uh, they pulled off funding for that. And that grant specifically was to address South County issues. And we're partnering here in the South County to try and deal with the vegetation management. And how are we gonna, how are we gonna implement the green waste? Because we have a substantially larger amount of green waste here in South County than they do up in Wyrika. And, you know, have, in all the outlying areas. So, so we did, we did apply, but they didn't. They told all ninety some applicants that we're not funding it. Um, but the county did receive theirs already and are in process with their study, so we will have a study hopefully by, um, year end. And so we are working on trying to implement that. I just wanted to make sure that. Everybody was aware.
Thank you. I have a, one additional question to understand fully this, because it, uh, came up the other day when I was discussing this with the South Dunsmere resident. Uh, are the counties undergoing any sort of direct? Uh, requirement or is this a city requirement?
It is both city and.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and we're working at the JPA, we're. We're, they did some staff changeover, but we're working from accounting level to try and. Because all of us are majority of the cities that are participative, about eight of the fourteen in the county. Are participative on a regular basis, and we're all very concerned about this because it's going to be really expensive. And we're trying to find alternative solutions. We just haven't, uh, been able to accomplish that yet.
And in, in addition to that, very quickly to one of the comments earlier about, you know, people getting less pickup or smaller bins. Unfortunately, there are certain fixed costs to just having these services, you know, getting the bins. We are mandated to pick up once a week, uh, for trash recycling and, uh, green waste under SB thirteen eighty-three. So there are just certain things that we are just unable to get out of, even if we were to reduce our stream site. Uh, the, the amount that we actually put within that stream.
Would it be possible to, um, say in our notice? That, uh, the initial increase is to, uh, solve our, our deficit right now. And future increases will, will be based upon the, the progress of the thirteen eighty, what is it, thirteen eighty?
Thirteen eighty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could we say that in the sense that there's two different things we're trying to do? One is to solve a problem and the other is to be forward looking, and that may not necessarily come into play?
Yeah, that's something that, uh, David and Blake and I will work on in, in drafting. We were discussing it, uh. I think it was yesterday or whatever. Um, so. We, that was some, some of the language we had discussed, so we will, we will ensure that we can clarify that what, what we're addressing is deficit. And then also thirteen eighty-three and future state requirements.
That we may not have to do the other one, and I think if we put, put that forward, it'll help ameliorate the, the pain a little bit.
I agree.
I move that we, uh, approve the two eighteen notice and move forward with procedures and set hearing day for October third, uh, council meeting.
All right, it's been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Bye.
Discussion, no, discussion, discussion of the motion. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I just, uh. Uh, I want clarification that nothing in that motion would give me assurance that it won't be an interfund loan from an enterprise fund. Is that correct? How we're interpreting?
So the way that the motion is worded, it, we're not determining what fund it would be an interfund loan on at this time.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with that. I'll bring that back to the council for a later discussion.
All right. We'll do a roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Kaiser.
Yes.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Yes.
Councilmember Brian.
I'm abstaining until I get clarity on the interfund borrowing. It's a very important point to me. Thank you. But I am supportive of us doing what needs to be done. I hope it. Gets better soon.
Okay, Mayor Claro enough.
Yes. Passes four yepses, zero nos, one abstain. Break. Um. We can do a five minute break. Yeah.
Please.
Five minute break and reports. All right, it is eight twenty-six and I am bringing this meeting back into session. And we are on to item number ten. Be discuss and adopt from revised community promotions grant program and approve funding.
I, I'm gonna let Councilmember Brian take it.
Yeah, so we all remember the community promotions program, but, uh. If anyone. Uh, here attending. Uh, does not know what the program is, it, it, it was a way that we codified the habit the city had grown into of supporting various community organizations. Um, some fit certain prototypes, some fit others. And, uh, in two thousand twenty, we formalized how it worked, came up with a program. The, the program, uh, hasn't had, hasn't been flawless since administration. And both the council, the city staff and the recipients have pointed to maybe ways we could, you know, better do it. So after the last appointment in, uh. I guess, uh, summer of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, finance committee was, um, tasked with, uh, coming up with a, a new program to meet the goals of council for the program. And at the time we discussed, uh, we'd already removed the, um, other government agency, the Parks and Rec. Decided we were going to deal with them separately, negotiate how to support them in their efforts. Uh, at the time this went to finance committee, the council also supported removing the library from the new program. Because the library, uh, we mean to support them in a more holistic way for operations. The council wanted to keep this a flexible program that would focus on future projects for Dunsmere. Um, we've always had the concern of an organization becoming too dependent on our funding. And then in a, you know, tight fiscal situation, we could remove that altogether. Uh, but thankfully, you know, the program is alive and healthy. Tonight's recommendation, I'll go into the staff report or I guess my report format. Has two parts. One, uh, finance committee tasked Mayor Clano and myself to, uh, draft a program. We brought it back to them. They gave us additional input and then we kind of finalized this program to come to council. Uh, I can certainly discuss their input, some of the aspects of the program. We arrived at, uh, with their direct, um, thoughts and made some adjustments on that. As far as the timing, I do want to speak to that. Uh, so ordinarily, we would have, uh, approved the funding in June, late July at the latest. And started, uh, quarterly distributions to people who received it. Um, it's, it's my opinion for the best rollout of this, that we also take action tonight to, uh, just continue the program as is for this year. Because we don't have the new program set up. We missed the typical timeframes for them to apply in the early spring. So, um, I'm gonna read, uh, let's see.
So can I just clarify a few things?
Sure.
Um, before we read, so, um, I, uh, Vice Mayor Brian mentioned, uh, removing the library from the program. And basically with that is, I think we had both talked about. Figuring out a better way to fund the library in the budget, not necessarily through a grant program like this. So basically, um. Give them a little bit more, hopefully the, the long-term goal of this was to give them a little bit more. Certainly in their funding and also kind of remove it from this program where. You know, they, they need money to operate, but then other people are coming in and asking us for money to get a project done. Or to do something for the community and, you know, we have a hard time cutting the library because they need that money to be funded. So then these other projects get cut instead. Exactly, yes. So we, so by removing them from this program, we're in no way talking about not supporting the library or not getting library, the necessary funds to operate. Only that we believe that. By moving the program around a little bit and then moving the library somewhere else with the budget, that isn't, you know, isn't subject. Nearly as much to year-to-year finances, um. Or what we can afford to put in the community promotions and also where it's not in direct competition with, um. Other agency or other organizations that may want to.
One or two other that we were considering.
Can I, can I?
So, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so all, all of you read the, that, and then we'll come back to that, that as well. I just wanted to make sure to put that out before we went further that we're not discussing.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So in recent times, the increased popularity of the program, along with fiscal challenges within the city. Has led council to task the finance committee to develop a new and improved process. One that keeps the positive aspects of the current program, but provides equal access and opportunity to all interested parties going forward. After the last awards, in particular, the city, uh, council or recognized the need to have a program that works better for both current and future recipients. While maintaining fiscal responsibility and accountability with city funds. So what we've tried to do over the years is come up with a way to set the program as if it were a, you know, cap. Not, not based on, you know, particular needs of the organizations, the applicants. But on how do we structure it to get the most benefit out of the contributions to the community, but also in the context of our budget? That's kind of the city side. From the, um, recipient side, having complete clarity on when they should apply. What the grant is, what the criteria are, what the criteria are for the project being approved. They, uh, constantly, I think, express kind of a lack of clarity, particularly new, new participants. What is this grant? What should I apply for? Well, you can give examples of other people that received it. But that, that's kind of the will of the council, not, councils clearly express what this program serves, what it ought to be. So, um, this really, uh, was workshop very heavily with the finance committee. Um, scheduling wise, we weren't able to run the finalized program for them, so there's no recommendation on their part. But they felt increased, increasingly based on input from the community at the finance committee. Uh, as well as the committee, that we ought to have a mission statement. And the mission statement reads, the community, community promotions grant program is intended to promote a healthy, vibrant and prosperous community here in Dunsmere. This program is designed to provide monetary support to different specific projects or one-time assistance. Sponsored by nonprofit or community organizations who have demonstrated community involvement. Grants shall be selected on their potential to impact the following three community objectives. Community welfare, economic development and arts and culture. These three categories, uh, have not been fully developed and we could certainly, you know, develop them further as we do these guidelines. But we really took the, the projects and organizations that have been funded in the past. And we increasingly felt that there were these three objectives that one of them hit at least one of those objectives. So we wanted this to be a well-funded but competitive program to allow for new future projects. So if one comes in, it's better, it's a better fit. We can grant it in the future. So the, the design of the program would be to take, uh, we have an example funding amount that we're going to recommend for the first year. Uh, fifty-four thousand. I would note that, well, that sounds like less than the sixty-eight this year with the library's contribution, which will be. Um, in the budget elsewhere, that would come out to over seventy-seven thousand. Uh, so it's actually an increase, but the idea would be to have, uh, four tiers of grant program. And because it's, uh, Dunsmere, we have an amazing place with all sorts of cool names. Uh, we decided to make it fun and name them after our waterfalls. So on top tier, we'd have the Mossbury Falls Grant of ten thousand. And in this scenario, we're recommending two of those. So there'd be two ten thousand dollar grants. We would have the Hedge Creek Falls Grants, which is five thousand. The, uh. Root Creek Falls Grants, which is twenty-five hundred. And for Burstar's Falls Grants, sorry, let's say.
Page fifty-three.
Um, for one thousand. Uh, originally, Councilman Clano and I didn't have the exact, um, amounts worked out, but finance committee. Uh, really wanted to make sure there was a lot of lower hanging fruit for new organizations that wanted some support. Um, we wanted deliverables, so we decided to, uh, kind of split it up and the amount. Of, um, community support you need to demonstrate, the amount of. Um, requirements change depending on the grant. So at the top level, at the twen- uh, ten thousand range. We're going to ask, we, we recommend that you ask for a, uh, twenty-five percent grant, so you'd have to raise twenty-five hundred in advance for it. And/or demonstrate community support by collecting fifty signatures in support of, of your thing. And that was actually, I think, uh, council or citizen Tasi, Mutasi. He, he really wanted to make sure there was a route that didn't require raising financial goods. Although that, that, that could be a program. I think a lot of the programs that come before us already have similar, similar grants. At the five thousand dollar range, the Hedge Creek Falls Grant, the grant, the match would go down to twenty percent and/or petition of twenty signatures. And then we would ask for a budget, project budget and track the money and report back for, for the first grant. The second grant, five thousand, we just ask for, track the money and report back. We would have no match or petition at the two thousand five hundred or the one thousand dollar level. Um, and then the design of it would be, um, it need to be a registered nonprofit or community organization, you know, an actual entity. That would receive the larger grants, but the smaller grants could be things in the past that are less organized. Hey, I'm, I'm doing this particular program. I want to beautify this project. I need a thousand dollars. Um, we've kind of lowered the threshold so that could be a possibility going forward.
Like a Boy Scout project or something.
The, the other sides of it that we, um, we can go over timeline, but I'd actually like to turn it over to Mayor Clano. He helped develop it as well as me for, um.
So one thing I wanted to kind of point out.
How it was supposed to be designed, yes.
Uh, that was brought up in, at finance committee and kind of got universal support for in finance committee. Is that out of the larger grants, at least one of them has to go to each category. So, you know, out of the ten thousand or five thousand dollar level grants, um. One of those needs to go to something in community wellness, or sorry, community welfare, economic development or arts and culture. Um, unless there's not one of the, unless no one applies for one of those categories, then it could be distributed. So kind of the way, um, we're looking at this is. Uh, just using, you know, a couple people or a couple groups that have come to us in the past is. Um, as examples, is the homegrown to come and say, hey, we, we, we want to apply for one of the five thousand dollar grants to go. For. So, the softball tournament work on the field. And that would go under community welfare. Um. Community Resource Center could come and be like, hey, we've got these two programs that we, we want to do a grant for this year. We want one of the two thousand five hundreds and one of the one thousand ones. And so basically they kind of are asking for the exact amount. And then that kind of gets rid of the whole thing of what we had last year where, well, what kind of a haircut do we want to give you? How much can you afford to lose? How much can you afford to lose? Because if we set it in the budget, what we have available, and then we have the groups. Coming to us and we just assign the money from these grant, from the, the pool of grants that are already set. Then we don't need to do anything like the haircuts, the, that kind of stuff that we've done.
The question I have is.
Yeah.
Essentially, then we have two different things here. One is to approve this as a forward-looking thing and another is to prove this year.
So, so what we're, let me just touch on what we're doing for this year, uh, kind of the steps we've taken to this. Is traditionally by now, just with how busy finance committee has been on other things and. Trying to rework the project, um, we're well behind on this year's community promotions funding. And both Vice Mayor Brian and myself felt that we need to get that money out to these groups. Some of them are depending on it, um, for their, their finances. So basically what the two of us did is we each picked a few of the groups from last year and talked to them. And basically just said, hey, would you be okay if you just got the same amount? As you did last year, again, this year. Um, pretty much every single group said yes. I talked with Chamber and Homegrown's, uh, I.
I talked to Community Resource Center, uh, Library, um, and a number of others.
And then I also talked to, uh, Tim Holt.
Well, and, and to be clear, it was more of a, a, what we'd recommend, except the council, of course, but, uh. The, the new program. the the new program, another reason to fund them this year is uh, we'll get into this uh. So the project guidelines and timeline. So the timeline, we're changing, and I think it's going to work better for the organizations. The awarding of the grants in June, July has been somewhat troublesome because a lot of them, say, the Chamber, they're in the middle of their season, like money needs to go towards preparation for it way earlier, you know, it's, we have a summer tourist season here, but the city's fiscal year doesn't match up with it. So we decided to match it up with the calendar year. And that also works better because it's it's a lot to award these while we're working on the budget. We're typically working on everything else at the same time. So the idea would be uh July uh first uh available amounts for grants are set in budget. So in the normal budget process, we'd say, okay, well, we're recommending fifty-four for the first year, but say it grows and it's, you know, seventy-five later on. So that's set in stone that year. Then September first, applications are open. November thirtieth, applications close. That's the other thing we've heard. We had a a two month before and it was just not quite enough. So we thought three months should be adequate. That's ninety days to get your application in. Um, in the between that, we want prior grant recipients to come back and talk to council in October and present on how the grants went. You know, no pressure, not part of the new application, just how did it go? You know, that's uh not an obligation, but we'd request that, you know.
Would that be to the finance or to the council?
Oh, it could be the council. I would think that'd probably be more appropriate. But um, the grants, uh, sorry. So then uh in January, we would have grants awarded by the council. So that would give, you know, closes November thirtieth, gives us time to get through, typically it's a pretty slow season right around Christmas, and then right after we come back from that, uh, grants can be awarded. We put fund in April, but we could certainly consider a little earlier. The idea is to get people the money before the summer seasons here, when a lot of the projects or or things are happening. So we think we think it'll just work a lot better. Um, I'd say the the one growing pain is going to be uh before it was kind of undefined. So some of the organizations really took it and ran with it, like come up with something amazing and I want twenty-five thousand, you know, um, this is going to limit that, but it's also going to encourage more people to to come to the table. So there'll be more things awarded overall. And one organization can apply for uh grants at multiple levels, but but the way we designed it, I'll go into the the guidelines. So total dollar amount set in budget during the budget cycle. So the idea would be council sets it, and we really don't intend to change that at all. That that's what the grant program is. The number of grants at each level set by council to match the amount in the budget. So say this year, we're we're asking for fifty-four. Grants are project-based and not a yearly entitlement. That's important because we just want to be clear with people. Um, as much as we want to support all good organizations in Dunsmere in perpetuity, the idea is the best best projects for that year are going to be what we're we award. And hopefully, there's too many good ones to pick from and we expand the program. But and that that's where I'd like to, you know, eventually get to get this program. But we want to be very clear that this is a project-based kind of grant. So the idea is here's a need, come in, solve this problem for that year, or or beautify. Or in the community resources case, they have so many different projects they work on, they'd have to figure out which one they want to go for. Um, but they could apply for one in the ten thousand, five thousand, and one thousand range, you know.
Let me jump in here for something that we kind of thought it, and why we structured it this way is just thinking about the Community Resource Center. They can look at this program three different ways. They can come in and say, all right, well, in order to do what we need, we need two one thousand dollar grants, twenty-five hundred dollar grant, and a five thousand dollar grant. And they apply for all those separately. Or they could just say, we need a ten thousand dollar grant. We are puzzling all these projects into this one ten thousand dollar grant and then come in with just a really strong proposal that's going to do a lot for the community. So they can either, you know, so an organization that has multiple projects can either spread out, spread out the projects over multiple grants or just come in and ask for the big one with just a really strong presentation.
That's good.
So we kind of wanted groups to be able to approach this from multiple angles to give them the most options. I'll let you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so I mean, the other thing, we do put as a requirement here, this goes with the not the yearly entitlement. Uh, we will not, the grants will not be used to support core operations of these organizations. And that just gets to the we we cannot afford to be permanent funding for a lot of these organizations. Even if they come up with the best projects, they'll win them each year, you know, in the in this grant process. But part of moving the library and Proxion Rec out is we need to permanently support those two endeavors. Um, must apply for specific grant amount. In other words, you can't put, you can't put less or more. You know, you're doing for one of the waterfall grants, uh, if we choose to stick with the waterfalls. Might not be everyone's favor. Uh, applicants can only apply for one grant uh for one grant, sorry, applicants can only apply for one grant. Uh, we got something wrong there, Michael. Sorry, uh, I think what we mean to say, there is only one grant per, only one grant per project. So an applicant could apply for several projects, but there'll be separate applications considered in their category. Organizations can apply for multiple grants for different projects. I think we went over the timeline. So yeah, if there's any questions, um, this isn't probably going to be the perfect solution, but we think it's an important step forward.
And just going back to the, because I just wanted to touch on this, I'll let um the library speak on how they feel getting last year's funding amount and work for them.
Let's, I appreciate it. Let's work on the program first and then what to do with the transition.
Okay. Again, we do have a future agenda item to discuss this. The mayor and I have an e-mail to supervisor Valen Valenswiler to talk about this item more. So again, this will come to a future agenda.
Absolutely. But let's let's focus on the program if we may.
But I just wanted to just put this out. Every other, all the other groups that I talked to were in support of getting what they got last year. So they were happy with that. Um, but let's, yeah, discuss the program or if anyone has any questions on this, um, which I'm sure people do, then we'll go to public comment and discussion.
Yeah, any any questions on the program?
No, I'm ready for public comment.
No, public comment.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, well, with that, I think, yeah, we covered everything that we wanted to cover. So with that, we'll open up this item for public comment. Um, three minutes, thirty seconds, or thirty-second warning. Uh, please limit all comments to this particular item. Um, and with that, we'll do people in the room first, then move to Zoom. And uh, Tim, take us away.
Yeah, Tim, Tim Holt, and a member of the Library Board of Directors. And I do want to address the, what you call the transitional thing, funding of the library, what it got last year, as I understand it. Um, this is a crucial time for city support for our library. As of the end of July, we had enough money in our checking account to cover about forty-five days of operation. Um, we are drawing on a rainy day fund that will keep us going another month. Two weeks ago, I sent a grant application to the Ford Family Foundation that if accepted, will cover at least another two months of library operation. Just want to make you aware of the situation here. Um, we will be putting out a newsletter in September, making library supporters aware of our need for financial support. And you may have noticed the donation jar on the counter of the hardware store, you know, we're trying everything we can. But to keep the library open past the end of this year, we really need the twenty-five thousand we've applied for from the city. Uh, the council has definitely stepped up to support the library for the past eight years, and we are counting on your support this year, and again, preferably for the full amount of our twenty-five thousand dollar requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Fanner, last name spelled P F A N N E R, uh, one-one-six Welsh Lane. Um, I don't know how artificial intelligence knows what it knows, but I was just thinking about what I would say, coming here, seeking the city's full support of the library's application for twenty-five thousand dollars, just thinking about it. And on Facebook, this quote popped up. Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation. Walter Cronkite. I think maybe all but one of us know who Walter Cronkite is. Anyway, just summarizing, the value of the library is really a jewel in this community, a catalyst for so much uh community unity, uh, education and and goodwill. Uh, the community library had over four thousand patrons visit last year. The library's community outreach effort includes our voices in the Canyon series that provides free lectures on a variety of topics, a summer reading program for children in the lovely setting of the community garden, monthly book club meetings, family movie, game day. They have a safe and friendly environment where people can check out books and magazines, use the internet, computers, printers, fax machines, or three D printer. Some of the lesser-known but important services the library provides include helping in writing resumes and searching for job opportunities. They have programs to help people prepare for the GED test and also are one of the county's officially designated cooling centers. Right now, they're seeing a lot of uh PCT hikers coming into the library to use the computers and recharge their devices. Truly, our library with its dedicated manager, staff, and volunteers and board of directors is a major source of education and enrichment in our community. So there again, reiterating, we would like to seek the full support of the library's application for twenty-five thousand dollars. And just a shout out to Karen O'Brien, who does such an excellent job there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter R. Fifty-eight, fifty-nine Sacramento Avenue. I did my best to digest the oral presentation. It sounds like there's a number of loose ends. Obviously, I'm a big supporter of the community grant program. But in my personal view, the reasoning that applies to the library also applies to the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. As far as I know, the city doesn't provide social services to our citizens. It should be a line item budget coming out of the general fund to support food, housing assistance, crisis management, kids programs, veteran support. Uh, if I understood it correctly, uh, the resource center is going to have to compete for their entire allocation of city support under this new grant program. I think that's wrong. Uh, they're extremely transparent, nonprofit organization. They will show you exactly where the city's support goes. It's like the sheriff's office. It's not discretionary. The library is sort of discretionary and the community supports it. I think that's true for the resource center as well. I think they should go into their budgeting cycle knowing the city is going to give this much assistance for the core programs they provide to the underserved in our community. I have talked with Steve Ryan about this, but I think it is fundamentally shortchanging the community to make them compute for uh compete for a discretionary grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwight Bailey again, fifty-nine oh six Castle Avenue. I'm really glad that the council is going to be approving these grants. And I point out that we had a issue where we couldn't for the Mossbury Trail. You mentioned the word we. The fact is, that grant or that fund that is being held, they are going to receive the money, take five percent out of it, donate the money back to that. It does not involve you. The person on that is this gentleman here or any future uh city manager. So somehow, in the discretion and the way things were worded, you have completely taken this, the board, out of the discretionary use of that money. I was trying to find the uh meeting where that was passed. I have not found it, but I, there is a hard copy. So I'm glad to see that you are taking responsibility to see these funds distributed.
All right, anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? If you do, please signify by raising your hand. And seeing no one, we will close public comment for this evening. And I just want to address, uh, uh, Mr. Bailey, I just want to address that. Um, it's not the Mossbury, this, what we're.
I know, I know. I'm just saying that in the past, when we developed these plans, you probably saw.
Well, this is this right here, yeah. It's just the name. It has nothing to do with the, yeah.
I know, I know.
So I think you guys did a very nice job on this um for the grant program. So I'm only going to make a motion for one and three. Um, so that if people do want to have more discussion on the twenty-four, twenty-five program, they can, but I'd like to get the ball rolling. Motion to adopt community promotions grant program as amended to clarify one grant per project instead of one grant per organization, starting in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Direct staff to prepare handouts to explain and market the new program and set the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year funding amount at the total of fifty-four thousand with two Mossbury Falls grants, four Hedge Creek Falls grants, four Root Creek Fall Grants, and four Burst Stars Falls Grants. Thank you.
When's the tour?
Oh, yeah, uh, we got to go there in the springtime. It gets way too hot this time of year.
Call the question. There's a second.
Um, this involves money, so let's do a roll call.
Uh, clarification. So again, are we, I'm not quite sure. Are we doing this year or next year or?
We are giving this into two votes.
That's what I thought.
So we're we're voting right now on.
The program.
Okay, future, then we'll come back. Okay.
Then we're going to discuss currently. So um, uh, roll call vote for the future program.
Okay, for the future program, uh, Councilmember Lucasey.
Yes.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Mayor Clarno.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously. Now let's take the other half of this and look at the funding for um twenty-four, twenty-five.
If I may?
Yeah.
Uh, so last year, the uh city awarded the Chamber of Commerce, uh, ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, the Community Resource Center, twenty thousand dollars, the library, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, the Cisco Arts Museum, ten thousand dollars, the Home Grown's, uh, primarily at this body represented by Fred Taylor, four thousand dollars, totaling sixty-eight thousand. And I, uh, if I can make a motion, I move. We fund all those organizations in that amount, totaling sixty-eight thousand for fiscal year uh twenty-four, twenty-five, to be distributed quarterly as in the past, before we switch over to the new program next year.
Second.
Yep. Yes.
Yeah.
Did the library get the full thing they asked for?
The full thing that they received last year.
So they, they, so just to clarify, they asked for twenty-five thousand dollars and the Finance Committee is recommending twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty.
That that's what council passed last year.
So here's what I would kind of like to say as, uh, just because I see where this is going, can I, can I, let me finish it because I think it'll satisfy you here. I think you'll like this. Um, so when we move or when we're talking about moving the library and potentially other organizations, if council so deems, um, to the year round, to the budget and out of the program, I think we should have that discussion relatively soon. I don't think we should wait a long time to do that.
We're here. Let's do it now. It should be a line item. The 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 library and your resource center should be funded. It should be having a vision.
I, I agree.
It's also not agendized.
But the big thing here is that that's not on the agenda tonight. So I don't think that we could vote to do that tonight.
No, you can.
But, yeah, exactly. So but what I'm suggesting of what we do is we fund everyone at the last year's amounts. And that'll get the library through for a long time, you know, weigh that last two, what is it, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars? And then when we add them to the budget, as long as we do that, you know, relatively soon, then we can discuss how that last, you know, what their funding needs are, how we can support them. Um, and at that time, we can give that last uh two thousand, seven hundred, fifty, um, as part of that.
Well, and for clarity, I I made a motion.
You can just call.
I I guess I I will clarify, I motioned that all the organizations received the amounts they got last year that they were very grateful for. Um, and I'm going with that motion. I believe there was a second.
I did.
Yeah. So no, we're not discussing that now. I am supportive of funding the library. I have always been. I'm looking forward to the future discussion, sure. But I would, I would recommend, particularly because there's other organizations that might want more this year. They're not given even a hearing. There was no application this year. We did not consider applications this year. So with that, I think it's a very fair.
Of course. Yeah.
And that's fine. That's their public comment.
That's their public comment. And we're giving what we gave last year and committing to fund the library in the future.
So call the question, call the question.
Well, yeah, so I'm going to call it, or I'll call the question. Um, we'll make this another roll call vote and I'll just put this out there then. I will make sure that we get the library over soon and we can address that last little bit of funding at that point. Okay, um, with that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Uh, Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Lucasey.
Hi.
Mayor Clarno.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously.
And I would like just to say that there is no doubt in my mind that we all support the library and the resource center without doubt.
All right.
All right, with that, we will move on to item number C, Adopt Resolution twenty-four dash thirteen, approving building inspector reimbursement rate with Siski County.
Mayor and council, so uh been in discussion with the county to provide interim building services and uh um unfortunately, I mean, you guys gave me the authority to move forward and sign an agreement, but unfortunately, the. unfortunately, I mean, you guys gave me the authority to move forward and sign an agreement, but unfortunately the county requires additional paperwork. So here we are presenting a resolution to the county, um, that is, uh, scheduled to be on their agenda on the sixth. And, uh, for, um, their approval. Um, so we kind of are in a little bit of limbo in the next five or six days. I did have a conversation with, uh, I can't think of Glenn's last name, Shekki or whatever. Is that right?
I don't know. I know Glenn by Glenn and I know Seth by Seth. So I don't, I don't know what.
There's also a Shay, Shane or Sean.
Sean.
One is Sean, lives down here in Dunsmere. So we did discuss what it looks like and, um, and so this is just a step to get the bureaucratic stuff out of the way. An update on the overall process. I'm, will be working with the current. I, I'm calling her tomorrow to discuss.
Oh, Joe, yeah.
Discuss the plan, plan check component. This is specifically for building inspection services and then, um, and they're okay with, uh, how our current plan check process works. And so we're just trying to figure out the logistics of getting paperwork and those kinds of things back and forth. But this, uh, this is step, step one of getting that. And so, um, I did receive one other, one other, um, proposal, but that was at a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour. The county prevent, presented me with seventy-seven dollars an hour to conduct the same inspections. And so, um, that is my recommendation is to move forward with the county for interim services. And, uh, as we go into the RFP process, um, here shortly.
No questions? I have one, I guess. Uh, just remind us what the prior rate was.
Sixty dollars or sixty-five dollars per hour.
Okay. And it'll likely go up with the RFP if we go with the.
Correct.
More expensive one. So I, I hate to say this. I, I want a much better building inspector and I'm very excited about the new one. But we do need to look at our permit rates, even if we look into subsidizing that for, to encourage growth. I do think we need, you know, same with the enterprise fee. It doesn't do us any good to charge way, way less than what it costs us. So I, I know we haven't raised our rates in decades. I, I, I don't want it to cost the city. I'm just saying we're getting a more expensive building inspector. We got to make sure the costs are covered. But that's a future item.
Okay, uh, anything else before I go open up to public comment?
No.
All right, uh, with that, I am opening up this item to public comment. Same rules as all the others, three minutes, thirty seconds, please limited to this item. And state your name and address at the beginning. Seeing no public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, I am closing public comment.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-four dash thirteen, approving the building inspector reimbursement rate with Cisco County for building inspection services.
Seconded.
It has been moved and double seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Uh, actually this, since this does have.
Money.
Yeah, sorry, roll call vote.
Councilmember Kaiser. Councilmember Deutsch.
Yes.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Hi.
And Mayor Clarno.
Hi. Motion passing unanimously. All right, and with that, we are moving on to item number eleven, new business. Item number A, correction to city council protocol, protocols regarding quorum definition.
This should be like a ten second item.
Yeah.
Please.
I'll leave it to Stephen.
I read it.
Could this be?
All right, um, hopefully you all read this already. But essentially the hazard mitigation planner is currently working on creating the new Dunsmere Emergency Operations Plan. And through this process, city staff has noticed that in the, uh, city council protocols, there is a discrepancy between what the definition of a quorum is between the two. Well, there's a section where there is a definition and there's a section that references the definition, but it references incorrectly. Um, and in the definition, there's also a typo, uh, which we verified by looking at the Mount Shasta City protocols, which are our exact copy of ours, except for the typo. So this resolution is essentially, or this, what we're asking is essentially for you to approve, uh, correcting these city council protocols so that the definition of a quorum aligns throughout the document. That would just make me very happy personally. That's why I brought this forward.
All right, any questions?
No.
All right, I'm opening up this item to public comment. Same rules as all the other public comments. Is there anyone who'd like to make comment on this tonight?
Please don't.
Seeing none, uh, I will close public comment on this item. All right, I move that we.
Replace the word exceeding with the word excluding in the first sentence of section eleven point L quorum on page twenty-five. The city council protocols documented correct the typo and retain the original intent of the definition of change of the two sentences. Eleven point, eleven point A, meeting dates, quorum reference on page twelve of the city council protocols documented to one quorum meetings will be canceled or adjourned when there is a lack of quorum as defined on page twenty-five.
Here, here.
All right, is there anyone who's going to second?
I just did.
All right, I moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Motion passing unanimously. Any future agenda items?
Second.
I had future agenda items.
No, send it to the mayor.
Meeting adjourned.
We normally go to capacity.
I know.
And so.
We did last time.
We did because it was important last time.
Yeah.